All right, I'd like to call the Village Council Budget Work Session Meeting to order May 14, 2024. I show the time at 5:03 in the afternoon. And we have full council here. So that said, need an adoption of the agenda as presented? Or do we have any changes?
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. Next up is Budget Work Session, Presentation and Discussion of the Fiscal Year 2425 Budget. Who's got that?
Hi. How's everybody doing?
Good.
You have a copy in front of you, again, of our balanced budget. Per your guidance in previous budget work sessions, we have this, there's a note on the cover here that it reflects a one cent tax increase to seven cent tax rate. That's just to cover additional operational expenses, inflation, the cost of everything's rising. So that was sort of decided at a previous meeting that I would include that. There's nothing new there. However, we have, we've added some sheets in the back for you. I believe I was asked to kind of show you guys what it would look like to have a additional increase, to have some revenue to put towards the roundabout payments that will be spread out over the next couple of years, the Bonds Grove, Wax Hall Marvin Roundabout. And then also the tax impact if we did another half cent increase to cover the off-duty officers at that intersection during or until construction's complete. So...
Is that this or this?
That's the big book. So, yep. So the cover sheet here, that just shows the different breakdown of all of the different categories. It shows your revenue and all your expenses across our departments with a one cent tax increase. And there's a specific page for every single department. Yeah. Nothing has changed there since the last time that you saw this, very few minor tweaks. But when it comes to this page right here, if you sort of go almost all the way to the end, you're looking for another cover sheet, but this one down at the bottom in red tells you it reflects a two cent tax increase. So you'll see the only change here, which is why I didn't print you a whole nother book. The only thing that's going to change here is we're going to have an appropriation to take the extra money that that one penny would provide. And we're going to put it in a restricted account for streets. That is to put that money away for the roundabout. So you'll see at the bottom, there's $167,000 that's going into a fund balance appropriated for streets. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So that two cents is actually really one more cent in addition to what we're proposing.
Yeah. So there's a one cent tax increase just to cover operational expenses. And then that reflects an additional one penny just to sock that money away for the roundabout. Okay?
An additional one penny, so not two pennies?
Right.
Two pennies total, one for operational costs, one penny for the roundabout.
Yep.
Okay.
That really just reflects an additional one cent, even though it says two cents in there.
Well, two cents over your current tax rate, yes.
So, one of them. Right. That's what I'm saying.
Yep.
We're saying the same thing.
So is the two cent, does that include the roundabout off-duty?
Nope. So if you flip to the next page, you'll see a two and a half cent increase. And that covers one cent operational expenses, one cent for the roundabout itself, and then a half a penny, half cent, to cover the officers.
And for how long? And the reason I ask that is because we, it's out there and we know how long this is taking to get...
Ideally, until you all adjust the tax rate again.
Okay.
Half cent boils down to...
Half cent generally means about $80,000 a year in income at our current rate.
If you, if you look at her sheet where it says the balanced budget includes a two cent tax increase at eight cent tax rate, if you look slightly above that, at the very first column, it's our first, or it says transferred fund balance streets, 167, 364. You see that number?
Yeah.
She's basically taken $167,000, which is equivalent to roughly a penny here, and pocketing that away to start building the fund to pay for the roundabout construction when that time comes. So she's basically kind of creating that fund to build up over the course of the next couple of years so that we will have the funding to pay for the roundabout when that time comes. So if you flip the page over, you'll see the eight and a half, which covers the off-duty. But going back to the question of how long do we do this, when does it stop? It's, the, the tax rate should be entertained and looked at every single year. So if y'all want to go up or down, then we can definitely do that. And just keep in mind, we're already talking about two other roundabouts in the critical intersection list from the county. So I'm hesitant to say until how long, because when this time comes around, we're probably going to have another one that we're going to have to figure out how we're going to pay for. So that's just, just food for thought and projections.
So, refresh my memory, how much a year are off-duty deputies for that intersection?
I think the quote was 90.
So we'll be just slightly shy with that half cent raise?
Well, so what I did was, I kind of borrowed from the amount that I was going to sock away from the streets. So I made it an even 90 for off-duty and lowered the amount being tucked away for the roundabout itself by about six grand.
Okay. So, in theory, it can go on perpetually, Joe, until the intersection is done.
That's what, yeah.
If it's in place.
Right.
So, as you are, as you all are looking at this, just one of the things that we had discussed at the last meeting was we were going to talk to some various officials to see if we could find some, some more funding. We obviously know the roundabout project is a priority and we're, we're trying to do what we can to come up with the funding for that, whether it's this tax increase or other means. We've, we've entertained the potential fee and lieu money with Wax Hall. It's not a guarantee. I've went over that option with you all in the past. One of the things that has transpired over the last couple of weeks is I've reached out to Representative David Willis. And he is willing to go to the table at the legislature and try to find us some funding. He obviously can't have an answer today or tomorrow, but he does feel like he can have some level of appropriation at some point in, in the works within the legislature, potentially the long session, which we wouldn't have until next year. So just note that that's, that's a possibility, but the way that Jill has these projected out is if that tax increase for, specifically for the roundabout construction doesn't start today, those numbers will change next year because she's counting on that 167 starting today. So next year, when the time comes around, that eight cent could be, or sorry, that one cent could be one and a half to two cent there, depending if, if, you know, what we get from the legislature or other sources. So just know that we could potentially wait and see what happens, but that impact only gets greater as, as the years go on.
How much do we owe in the upcoming year?
67.
We, we don't have a payment for fiscal year 24 to 25 scheduled. We have one 25 to 26, and it's about 60 something thousand, 67-ish thousand.
About right. I thought there was one next year. I mean, this...
We paid it this year, and then we have one two years.
So we haven't, we had engineering that was due this year. We have a portion of right-of-way acquisition potentially next year, but it likely is going to be 18 months from the time they started. Now, hopefully they get it pushed up and expedited, and it will be next year. But the way they've advised us, it's going to be 18 months, but we will try to, try to push them to make it happen faster. And we're just going to have to come back for a budget amendment if it does, if y'all don't take action on, on this.
Bottom line is, is that when, when we see whatever David Willis can do for us, whatever Wax Hall can do for us, and whatever the county revow looks like, we can always change the tax rate back, make it more towards where it was to start with. But until we know that, we have to plan for nothing coming our way. So...
When does the county revow come into play? This time next year, will we be talking about it and it will be affecting our bottom line?
Yes.
Or will it be...
They're going through revaluations now. Those new tax rates will be effective next year. So when we have budget discussions next year, it'll be in those conversations.
But we won't get that until January 26?
Yes.
And, and just to clarify, even if we were to get some additional monies through David Willis or Wax Hall or other places, it doesn't necessarily mean that the timeframe for the roundabout can move up in any way. You know, it's, it's just the ability to pay for it, not that it can be done any sooner or anything, correct?
That's correct.
Does anybody have any other questions?
I'm thinking like the DOT thinks where they give us a contract and we don't have any choice of what we do. It just is what it is. Maybe we make something insane. Yeah, we want a timeframe. And if you don't hit this mark, then, then we start taking away from that 800. I mean, why can't we do it? We, we have that. They, they do it to us.
We're already, we're already bound by the contract with, and, and they always, in all of their contracts, they put a disclaimer available of, you know, upon funding, because their funding is always competing with other state resources. There might be a catastrophe on the eastern side and they have to use...
Wishful thinking.
It is wishful thinking. It's a great idea.
Joe, if you remember, on, on this roundabout, they told us that we couldn't come up the money because the, the bonds got voted down. They said they would be glad to take them off to some other places that need them.
I'm not saying we're not getting the money. I just, we gotta find the money. We said we would, we would, we had to, we didn't have a choice but to participate. That's the other issue that needs to be discussed. Okay. Any other questions from council?
I think we gotta make a decision, like...
Well, I, I think to, I think to Andy's point, we have to consider we're getting zero money.
Definitely.
We, we have to assume that we're getting zero money and make our decision based off getting zero money. I believe that over the term, over, because I, I did meet with David yesterday. And I do believe that, I, I know that he's working diligently to get funding for not only that, but some other things as well. And I, and I, and I met with the representative who is the appropriations representative for the state and, and spoke, had a few minutes with him. So we're kind of on his radar as well of, of getting funding for... I won't say a lot of things, but he's, he's, we're now on his radar, not only from, from Dave, conversation with David, but, you know, I pressed him as well, on some of the things that, that we would certainly appreciate his taking consideration on. So I do believe we get it, but we have to assume that we get no money and, and go from there. And it's better to be over-prepared than under-prepared for what we're, what we're doing. So that's, you know, to me, I think that's, that's good news and, and we can kind of work it, work it back from there on making our decision.
Do you guys want to first know that, I mean, just knowing that the off-duty is, is essentially a half a cent tax increase? Do y'all want to talk about that and hash that out before you?
I think we should.
Yeah. And, and I also think it's a year-to-year decision, really. Because every budget year now, this is going to come up. Whether it's for the roundabout piece itself, which we're already committed to, or the deputies, which we're, we're considering, we understand is a safety situation to some degree. It's also an inconvenient situation to a greater degree. But, you know, is it to the point now that it necessitates $90,000 a year and an increase in everybody's taxes? I, I don't necessarily feel that. But, you know, a year from now, we're going to be looking at this again. And it could be a, a, a more dire situation at that point. You know, I'll, I'll say the other issue is, until Providence Road does get rewidened, what we're also seeing over in that part of town is continued issues where whenever there is an accident on Providence Road...
Shuts down.
It makes that entire section, Wax Hall Marvin, Bonds Grove, even worse. Something happened the other morning and it, it was basically down past Great Byram, you know? You know, to stop at that stop sign. So, yeah, I, I think at least from my perspective, as I've even spoken to some of my neighbors down there and so forth, yeah, we, we'd all like to have officers there, but with the number of three of them and it being basically $90,000 a year just to have a couple of hours a day covered, I, I don't know that that's, you know, really the right way to spend the money right now.
Refresh my memory, is that year-round or is it just school?
Year-round.
Year-round?
Just during school.
Just, or is it year-round?
It was year, it was projected.
I thought we went back to year-round. I thought we did. I wasn't...
I think we had kind of arbitrarily decided a couple of months wasn't going to save a whole lot, so we...
Yeah. Well, John's right. I mean, I think we've kind of been looking at it as a commitment from now until. But we don't necessarily have to do it now. We could wait and see how the intersection looks in a year or two. And if it gets really bad, we can, you know, pull the trigger on it and spend that money then without raising that half-cent tax right now.
I mean, my, my thought process has not changed in terms of, if, when somebody tells me it's my responsibility, then I'll have a more in-depth conversation. It's not my road. It's not my responsibility. So, but I agree, we're probably going to talk about this, this time next year again. Does anybody have, like, does anybody want to do this this year?
I'm not inclined to.
I'm not.
No. I went through it two times, two, uh, two days last week. And between 2:20 and 3:30 in the evening, I had no problems. We had a person in the coffee with council and one of the ladies from that area. And she said it was just a matter of patience to get through.
And it is.
I can tell, I can tell you from, from me personally and a lot of people in, in Marvin, I spent more, because I actually took, took it by myself to go down and, and do that. I waited longer at Joe Carr and Marvin Road. Every single time, I did it five times, every single time, I waited longer at Joe Carr and Marvin than I did down there.
Same here.
I will note, to that point though, I will note that we have had a resident to send an email and say, hey, if you're going to do it here, I would like for you to look at here, here, and here. And I don't remember what specific intersections they were, but...
Listen, I've, I've sat coming out of, coming, coming out of my neighborhood. I've sat there for five minutes. Now, that doesn't sound long, but I've sat there for five minutes. So I, again, I'm all about precedent. And when we set a precedent that was, someone says, well, that's an inconvenience. Well, then I need a, I need a deputy in front of my neighborhood from this hour to this hour. Where, where do we, you know, where do we, where do we stop it? And...
This is what the lady...
So we don't want the half a cent? Okay. I mean, is that what I'm hearing? I think we're all in agreement on that. Okay.
And I would just also add, I mean, from a budget perspective, yeah, but this is something we're going to talk about all year.
All the time, every year, every budget season.
Yeah, way like 900 homes behind the post office.
I do want, also want to say, there have been a lot of accidents there. So we're not discounting that, and, and I want to make sure that the public is aware of that. Because we've seen the accident statistics there, and it's one of the reasons why it is rated a critical intersection. But if we're committing to it now, we're committing it to, to it for the full four years. So you're really committing $360,000. Or more.
So just so y'all are aware, it sounds like you're, you're not interested in it, but Jill has prepared, just so you, this is item number three, so we're kind of doing these together. But she has prepared what this handout is, and it shows you a summary of what we've talked about in terms of the tax increases. And the next page reflects the actual impact on residents based on their home value. So you can see that information if, if you want.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't think anybody at this point is prepared to do that extra half cent. So we don't, yeah, I don't even think we need to talk about this. So I think the main question is, do we do the full one cent up to eight? Or...
Two cents. It's at six.
Well, no, the, the first one is a one cent.
So the second one cent, do we want to do the full second one cent? Or do we want to do a half and just start putting it away and kick it down the road and see when we actually need the money or not? See what we get, see what the revow looks like.
I mean, I, I just said it. I'm not, I am not betting on any money until it shows up. I'm not getting down the road four years and not have tried to put any money away betting on something and then it not be there.
Do we want to do a full one cent?
So, well, if we don't, then I don't see how we're going to have enough to get there. If we get zero money, we're going to need every penny of that to get there.
You, you gotta remember too, this, this is, this is assuming, let's, let's be real.
Yeah.
I am sitting at home and I'm talking to my, my spouse and I'm going, okay, let's budget this, but let's not budget for any kind of emergency, any kind of something happening. My kid hopefully would pick something up and throw it at me. And go, Dad, really? Do you really think that over the term of, of the next year, something may not happen? Tree may fall in the house.
I understand that.
I'm just, I'm just saying...
I understand that, but that doesn't mean that we can't then next year go up one and a half cent to then make up for it.
We could.
We could, but I, I, I think we cannot, we should not. It's not fiscally responsible for us to, to just do the extreme bare minimum to get by, in my view. I want to be able to, this municipality, because here's the thing. Again, as I said before, you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't. If something, if an emergency happens and we don't have the funding, we're going to get completely just, and, and I don't want to be in that position. I'd rather prepare for it and, and, and have it. It's not like we're, you know, at the end of the year, we're throwing a big party.
Well, I'm just trying to make it a little more palatable, because, you know, you're going to go up two cent and people are going to say, oh, you're going up whatever the percentage is instead of two cents.
I, I understand, but if I, if I look back here...
Because that is absolutely what is going to happen. It, it's not going to be a two cent tax increase. It's not going to be an additional $600. It's going to be a X percent increase.
And that's, that's for the people that want to get on next door and, and pitch it that way, but it is what it is.
I can't make a decision based on what someone's going to throw out on social media, and I won't make that decision.
I'm just trying to make it a little more palatable.
But I'm, I'm also, thank you, Jill, for your, for your spreadsheet here. At a $1.5 million home, we're talking about $16 a month. $16 a month.
Yeah. I, I also think that it's not like we're, we're budgeting something here and starting to accrue monies for something that's a wish list. It's something that we know is going to be an expense that we have to make.
Yes.
So that's why I just think that that's more just a, a function of properly planning for and budgeting something that, that you absolutely know you're going to have to pay for, you know?
Bob?
On for the two, two cents.
I just wanted everybody to get it all out there.
Okay.
I wanted it fully discussed, all the options, looking at it, you know, because we're so greedy.
Well, the thing about it is too, that is brought up in this earlier, there is going to be another roundabout behind this one.
Oh, there's probably two more behind this.
Well, two more, and, and so it's, you know...
All right, I'm good with it. I'm just...
And they're going to cost more.
You can still vote.
Well, we went from two point, we went from 2.5 to five.
Yep.
So this other, you say, going to be seven and 10. Well...
All right, Jill, what else we got?
Okay. So I just want to, I just want to understand that y'all are directing me to prepare a final budget with a two cent tax increase total, one cent to cover operations, one cent to be socked away for streets. The tax rate will be adjusted from...
Not streets.
Well, it's going into streets, but we have earmarked it for roundabout.
Very specific. It is for the Wax Hall Marvin Bonds Grove Roundabout.
Yes.
We can actually create a capital project.
I think that would be a great idea.
Okay. And then, so the tax increase will, the tax rate will go from six cents to eight cents with next year's budget. We have to, I have to prepare that tomorrow and send it all, send a final draft to you all via email. And we got to get it published. We have to put the newspaper announcement out so that we have enough time for the public to review it. It's going to be posted. And then you guys will adopt it officially at the next meeting on the 30th.
Perfect. Thank you, Bill.
So I have my marching orders correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Good job on the budget, you guys.
Yes.
Balanced budget, no deficits, certainly not a...
I thought we did.
Wow. Yeah.
So, um...
Sixteen million?
No, no, that was cash.
We, we did supply a couple of supplemental information documents in your agenda packets, and it's, there's no action on this, it's just if you guys wanted to read more about the projection of revenues from the League of Municipalities, that's provided in there. We haven't, we haven't done this in, in quite some time, but we have a contract list that we keep record of all of our ongoing contracts, so I just wanted you all to review the, the contract list, if there's anything on there that you saw was alarming or had questions, feel free to shoot me an email and ask. And then we also provided the annual League of Municipalities Cost of Living Allowance so that you can see that we're in line with those projections as well. So, that information's there, we've already discussed item number three. And then the last item is the annexation consultant, which has not been included in this year's budget. I'm going to turn it over to Austin so that he can present it to you all, but it would either be a fund balance appropriation if you decided to do this, or essentially another half a cent on the tax rate if you wanted to do this.
All right, so, as you know, that we, you guys initially pushed the idea of a consultant to work with us on annexation to the next fiscal year. Per our last meeting, we were talking about possibility of looking at the annexation by referendum process while at the same time running a voluntary campaign simultaneously. To do that properly, in my opinion, that you should at least consider the idea of an annexation consultant. I got one proposal back from InFocus, was very expensive, has a lot of good stuff in it, but it's ninety two thousand five hundred dollars.
Doesn't guarantee anything.
Does not guarantee you any, it does not guarantee you anything, it guarantees you the expertise of those you hire, that's about it.
So, obviously, I think that's outrageous. What I would like to do is hold on to this proposal, and as we put together our group, our annexation group, which I'm hoping we can talk about at our work session.
We've got that at the work session, one thing I'll note, note about this is, me and Hunter have not had a chance to meet on this yet, we've not spoken in Focus, this is what we got back from them, so there are some things we want to clarify here and figure out exactly what would be included, but yeah, we absolutely can hold on to this.
Yeah, let's, but let's hang on to it, and let's kind of give that to the group that we do end up putting together, because they may look at this after they've, you know, talked and met and tried to have some stuff out and say, no, this is really what we need to do in order to, so it'll be another set of eyes looking at it, but I think that is crazy expensive.
So, so who are the other players in something like this? Is it the only game in town that...
No, I mean, there's different firms, I, I sent out some feeler emails to some, some different planning firms, InFocus was the first one to get back to me, I sent it over to Centralina, I sent it to the League of Municipalities, and a couple other planning firms. Centralina was interested, I just haven't heard back from them, but InFocus...
I mean, I wouldn't stop trying to gather that information and just see, I mean, if somebody comes in at half the cost with the same, I mean, they probably won't, but just keep those feelers out.
I'll send some follow-up emails out and let y'all know what I get back. Once, if I start getting multiple proposals, I'll start kind of going through them and comparing and seeing, okay, what are we getting out of each one? That way, at least, you guys have something, can compare them on equal grounds.
Yeah, and I, I think what Kimberly is, is saying too, is an important point, the annexations that we've had to date within Marvin, now, different circumstances, different laws at the time for annexation and everything, but they were all done based upon volunteers, involved residents, and that's what you're going to need to get anything across the finish line anyway. So, I don't know that we really gain a lot initially from a consultant telling us their way to do it. I think the more appropriate way is to form the annexation study group first, to, to have some meetings with them under their belt, to start to put feelers out in the community, to get feedback on, on how is the right way to go about this, to, to have the most successful outcome. At any point, you know, going through that, the information that you've gathered might come into play, where, where we might do something to engage some consultants on some specific areas, rather than kind of an overriding, you know, you know, direction that they want to kind of control through the whole process. But, you know, I understand, we've gotten a, a number of applicants already for the annexation study group, I think we had five or so the first day.
You've actually got eight registrants right now.
Okay, do, do we know how many of those are Marvin residents versus non-Marvin?
Seven, seven are residents, there's one non-resident right now.
Okay, and, and one of the things I think we'd really like to incent is, is more non-residents as well.
We'll do another social post and put that in our newsletter again, so hopefully we can get some more people. I will say, we posted it one time and got eight people, so that was very good.
Yeah.
We'll bring, we'll bring this back to you guys at your work session, we'll go over some ideas about the study group, I'm already kind of working on, planning those first few sessions, which I hope can really be educational, walking the group through what annexation law is and the things they need to know going into the group.
Can you, before our work session, can you send us the list of people that have...
Signed up?
Well, who have...
Applied.
Yes, so that they were interested.
Yeah, I, I think this is going to be a group of that, but also, it's really appealing to start with the HOA boards that are out there and say, hey, look, you know, and, and do it at a high level where we're kind of giving all the good reasons, right reasons to be one community versus, you know...
And, and I think also, just like Austin mentioned, for the study group, it'll be an educational experience, understanding the new laws, annexation by referendum, but also, I, I think it's really going to have to include an educational component for a lot of people who moved here long after, maybe some in their neighborhoods are in Marvin, some are not, individual houses, that's going to play into also, I, I know we talk about incentivizing people to, to come in voluntarily now, before we even look at something by referendum, but you're kind of, if you're doing that, you're also eating away at the people that would be naturally voting yes too. So, you know, there's, there's got to be a balance there, and you've got to have an understanding of what contiguous areas you're looking at, and all those things will be considered.
And that's a lot that's to be discussed for the group to decide, where you focus your voluntary efforts, and if you do the referendum process, you focus that on a different area. There's a lot of good topics for that group to discuss, and it'll, it'll be, they'll be very good conversations to have.
Okay.
I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
All right, that's all we needed on that? All right, I'll need a motion then to adjourn.
So, moved.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes. How was that?
Good, Joe.
Did good, Joe.
Just saying.
Cattle, cattle fodder the entire time.
They pat him on the back, good job.
Good job, Joey.
I'm going to go, I'm hungry.
All right, let's go, let's go back.
Well, if you first walked in, I thought you had one of those hats that have the hair on it up there.
Somebody else is throwing it.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
He needs to go over the public hearing. I'll go, I'll go, sorry. He's, he's not with me.
Okay, that's fine. I just want Jerry to go over there.
No box on.
Oh, really?
The ladies already talked about it?
No.
It's a budget home.
Budgets.
Budgets are large, five.
They don't mean to say that.
No, they added it.
You know, they got the money to do that.
We just couldn't hear something.
A lot of heat up here.
What do you want to say anyway?
Good luck.
Good, how you doing, Tommy?
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, my God.
Where in upstate, where are you? Where in upstate New York?
In Aurora, that year ago.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I went to college in Plattsburgh, yeah. I lived down in...
Plattsburgh, Virginia?
No, Plattsburgh, New York, up on, up on the Canadian border. I lived in the Hudson Valley, in the Duchess County area for many years, I moved down here about twenty years ago.
By the way...
Yeah, yeah, it's been a wonderful place to bring up family, I had three daughters that, you know, when I moved, well, I only had one when I moved here, but I had two more once I moved down here, and they're all off to college and beyond now, so...
Yes, ours.
Yeah, I, my, my folks are still up there in Pauling, New York, it's called, and it's kind of near Brewster, where eighty-four comes through there, and they, they also, my sisters are down in Florida, so we as kids are all down in the warm weather states, and my dad is eighty-two years old now, and I still have to yell at him because he's out shoveling snow off the roof, you know, at eighty-two years old. Yeah, there's one right there to the left.
You heard it, it's...
I didn't say that.
Hey, that was quite a, a cough I heard there.
Yeah, I was...
I, I met a couple of them at the MDO thing, but I forget their names.
Hey, guys, I heard, basically, I'm in, you guys are...
I signed in, are you?
Yes.
You guys are, yes.
For the public hearing, are you guys speaking?
Thank you for calling.
You're in the public hearing, so, you do, you do, you're not asleep.
John, may I exchange?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just making sure we're on the same, on the same page. Who's here for DMV?
We, we, you're here, you're here.
The development board?
Yeah.
Oh, who's speaking, or not all of them speak?
Okay.
Are you taking any comments at all? We got signed up.
Yeah.
We don't say anything first, you guys, what, any of those, so, it's going to be a better going intersection.
Hey, Austin, so, I've been hearing a bunch down around my neighborhood, state DOT roads, cream and Waxall Marvin, but that the light there has changed in the last couple of weeks, and I didn't know what was going on, but then all of a sudden, it seems like either the cars, as you pull up to it, it doesn't make the lights change, you know how they have pads, you could pull up to that at night, that intersection, and be sitting at a red light with no other cars around you.
You might be on a timer.
Well, it, it's a combination of both usually, because it, it feels that cars are there, right? On a certain way, like if you're coming off cream properly, but like, who would we even ask about that if they've changed it at DOT? Like, who, who would we normally...
There's probably, I'll just call the general finance and ask from there, because they'll direct you to the next office.
Okay.
I haven't heard anything about it. I mean, that's...
They, they definitely changed something recently, because for the people that go through there a lot...
They could, they should change the physical light, or they've like programmed it.
Yeah, it would be reprogrammed, yeah, but they haven't changed it.
I don't even know how, whether that requires someone on site, or if that is just done remotely.
Done remotely, I don't know. Or maybe got out of whack and just never, never got back in or something.
No, you were in the restroom, I had Christine go over with Joe. Yeah, no, I had Christine over with Joe. John, you ran out the other night, I just wanted to see if you were good from last week. You had any fun conversations at the open house?
Oh, yeah, no, no. Nothing really.
Okay. Okay, there.
Yeah. Yeah, I got it. Go ahead. I, I need two minutes.
For a form him. I could.
He always come with hat.
Well, we just asked him to, but he wasn't planning. So he is bringing it out, but I was thinking you might want to just have it, you know, in case.
You can't remember where he is.
We need to refer or something, yeah. What's that? Yeah. Thought for sure.
I'm just gonna make a quick note, if you are here to speak publicly, please make sure you sign up before the meeting starts. Sign up sheet. Austin is outside still, or do you have it?
Yes, there are two. There's one for general public comment and the other is for the public hearing.
Okay, so for the public hearing, if you're here and you want to speak publicly, we'll give you that opportunity. We just need to have your name and information ahead of time before the meeting starts. Thank you. We'll be starting in a few minutes. Are you good, Austin? Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to open the village council regular meeting, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. I show the time at six oh one PM. I show we also have a full council, so we don't have to consider allowing remote participation. First up, we have adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes?
Under unfinished business, we're gonna table number one, which is discuss and consider return of the Marvin Creek Connector Trail easement, number two, which is discuss and consider entering contract with Dewberry Engineering for survey, et cetera. And number three, actually, number four, is discussion of reinstituting paid parking passes and park fee for Marvin Eford Park till after our closed session.
Okay, so it'll be, still be on the agenda for tonight, but just after closed sessions, we'll rearrange a few things. Okay, anyone else? Hearing nothing, I will ask for an adoption of the agenda as amended.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Next up, we have a pledge of allegiance. What? Adopt, I'm sorry, adoption, one more. You, you're always catching me on this, because I always think of, adoption of the previous minutes, my, my apologies. So we have one set of minutes, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, that's from your April twenty-fifth work session.
Council have a chance to look at those minutes?
Yep.
The only thing I would say that you, in my comments, you referenced an Asian group that was against nonviolence. Their name is Kiran, K-I-R-A-N, and that wasn't put in there, but they were the group that invited me, so if you can just include that name. I'm sure, I don't need a motion for that, right?
You do need a motion.
I do, do need a motion, okay, so I'm just, I'm noting who the group was that I was there for their walkathon at Eford Park. As amended, yeah, okay.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the previous minutes for four, from four twenty-five, twenty-four work session as amended.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Next up is pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under one power, indivisible and infinite, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all. Next up is public comment period. This is not necessarily for the, this is not for the hearing that we have coming up, but this is just regular public comment. And Austin, you can let me know if we have anyone signed up.
I think there may have been a little bit of confusion on the sign-in sheets, so we may need a little bit of clarity.
Okay, I'm gonna read the names aloud. If you intend to speak, just come on up.
If you're here to speak for the public hearing, that will be.
That'll be later.
That'll be later, but if you have something else you want to speak about, then you're free to come up.
Ronald Hamel. Okay. Dennis Crawford. Sorry, I can't. Oh, you're fine, you're fine. Jay Johnson. Marilyn Gill. Scott Etheridge. Marshals at Gore. Okay, and John Sensenbrenner. Okay, so you don't have anyone signed up to speak?
All right, thank you. Next up, we have presentations. First up, we have signing ceremony, ceremony for mayoral proclamation proclaiming May nineteenth through twenty-fifth as public, as National Public Works Week.
Well, as our public works director is physically working right now. If you want to come to the table, the podium, Davy, and you can sign, we, we basically just wanted to, next week is public works appreciation week, recognition week, we, we're doing a couple of things next week. We wanted to present this to our fellows that we can identify and recognize them in, in next week's effort, so just a formal signing.
Okay, so I, just for background purposes, I'll just make a little note for National Public Works Week, May nineteenth through twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Many states, provinces, cities, towns, and municipalities from across North America come together to celebrate with official government proclamations and resolutions in honor of the contribution public works makes to their communities in planning, building, managing, and operating the heart of our local communities and in advancing the quality of life.
And I will say, these fellows are responsible for how well village hall looks, how well the outside exterior looks, the landscaping, the, the, the nice park that we have, our greenways and trails, portions of our roads signage. They do a lot of work for us here in the village and, and they basically take great pride into everything they do, and, and they're responsible for the beauty of, of what we exhibit here with the village, so we appreciate everything they do.
Yeah, it's easier this way. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and read this proclamation. P dash two oh two four oh, dash oh five, dash oh one, proclaiming May nineteenth through twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four is National Public Works Week, advancing quality of life for all. Whereas the public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to the sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the village of Marvin. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the village of Marvin to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year two thousand twenty-four marks the sixty-fourth annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, I Joseph E. Polino Jr., Mayor of the Village of Marvin, do hereby designate the week, May 19th through 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contribution they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the Village of Marvin to be effects this 14th day of May, 2024. I'll come up and. Know the movie Old School, but I felt like that guy where he's doing the debate, he gets through it and goes. Thank you, truly thanks to all staff and everything you guys do to make, make our town work. We appreciate it. All right. Apologies, one second. Okay, next up, we have the Consider the Adoption of Resolution in Appreciation of Deputy Sheriff Tommy Gallus Upon His Retirement From the Union County. Hold on one second, from the Union County Sheriff's Office. Tommy, you are in here somewhere, are you not? I'm gonna read this. And I just want you to know, I truly appreciate, you know, your service with our community, and I was reading all the, where you've been with Union County, so we truly appreciate it. I think we do need a motion to approve this, so I'm assuming I'm gonna get anonymous.
An anonymous?
Not anonymous, unanimous approval with this, so I need a motion.
So I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution in appreciation of Deputy Sheriff Tommy Gallus upon his retirement from the Union County Sheriff's Office as presented.
Mr. Mayor, can you read the language?
Yes, resolution in appreciation, excuse me, RS dash 2024, dash 05, dash 01. Resolution in appreciation of Deputy Sheriff Tommy Gallus Upon His Retirement From the Union County Sheriff's Office. Whereas the Village of Marvin desires to recognize and honor employees of the village for dedicated and distinguished contributions to the community. And whereas Tommy Gallus began his career with the Union County Sheriff's Office in March of 1996, where the Union County Sheriff's Office sponsored him during basic law enforcement training, B-L-E-T. And whereas Tommy Gallus was hired as a deputy sheriff and assigned to the Detention Division in September, 1996. And whereas Tommy Gallus was promoted to corporal and served in the Detention Division in 1998 on Baker Squad. And whereas Tommy Gallus served as a police officer for the town of Wingate from March 1999 until August 2000, after which he returned to the Union County Sheriff's Office to work in the Detention Division and Court Security. And whereas Tommy Gallus served as a community deputy in Stallings from 2001 to 2004, and in Indian Trail in 2004, before moving to patrol. And whereas Tommy Gallus simultaneously served on the Special Response Team, initially as an operator, and later as a precision marksman. Very good. And whereas Tommy Gallus served as a canine handler from August 2008 until July 2020, working with three canines, with Champ while on patrol, with Zorro while on patrol, and with Aleah, Aleah, inside the school system. And whereas Tommy Gallus has faithfully served the Village of Marvin as a community deputy from July 2020 until his retirement from Union County Sheriff's Office in April 2024. And whereas Tommy Gallus' selfless dedication to his profession made the Village of Marvin and all of Union County safer places to live and work. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Marvin that appreciation be shown to Deputy Sheriff Tommy Gallus in honor of his loyal service and dedication to the citizens of the Village of Marvin, and urge all to extend congratulations to him upon his retirement. Adopted this 14th day of May, 2024.
And you do have a motion?
Now I have a motion on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, congratulations, and thank you.
Wow. Pretty emotional. It's all I've done for the past 28 years. I enjoy the community. Thank you for the community support. Keep us in your prayer, especially with our active law enforcement. They need it. We all need it. Like I said, just thank you for the support. It means a lot. Thank you.
The door's always open, Tommy, so if that sidewalk gets too busy, just let us know. Would love to have you back. Thank you again. All right, next up, we have reports and updates. First up, we have manager's report. Christina, what do you got?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Wanted to update you real fast. At the last meeting, or a couple of meetings ago, we all advised of continuous water flooding issues, as you're aware, on the Marvin Loop. If you look in your agenda packets, there's a map, where we have two primary points of interest. And the AMT studies that we have been working to fulfill a scope of work are defined in your, in your agenda packets. They're not to exceed $20,000 for both the Marvin Loop and the Marvin Eford Drainage Project, for the additional pavement that we were gonna put in. Just wanted to make you aware that they're only setting these points of interest on the Marvin Loop in terms of where all the water is puddling to. So they're not gonna look at the entire, they are gonna look at the entire one, but those are the primary points of interest. So just making y'all aware. Not asking for anything, just letting you know. Is there any questions on any of that? Okay. That's all I have.
I did have a question. What is an inspiring home? What is that?
What is a what?
I was looking on the map, and it says an inspiring home, and it has a location. What is that? It looks in the neighborhood.
Home business.
It's a home business. Okay, alright, I just was curious. Alright, thank you. Next up, planner's report. Sorry, Hunter.
The only thing that I have an update on is the Marvin Loop project. The sidewalk project from the preserve all the way down to Saddle. The contract has been executed with Dewberry. We actually had our kind of kickoff meeting yesterday, walked the tentative route. They're going to have a conceptual design that I'll probably present to you guys either at the May work session or in June, just to kind of get some initial feedback before they dive into the engineering plans and the environmental analysis. But other than that, that is all I have, unless you guys have any questions for anything.
Where's the honeymoon?
Where's the honeymoon?
Yeah.
Going down the Keys.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Congratulations on Saturday. He's getting married Saturday, so thank you, Hunter. Next up, roads report. Davey?
Getting to Mayor, Members Council. In a recent meeting, I had brought your attention some stormwater issues in the Oakbrook Estates neighborhood. At the time, I had provided some photos, just some photos of the issue itself, the roadways. I tried to attach the videos that I was provided by Homeowners Association. I'm not sure if it loaded or not on your tablets, but as you could see in those videos, and I'm not sure if we, can you pull that up, please?
Yeah, I think they came as PDFs.
I had included some still shots with the videos in this report. But I think what you'll see in the videos is water flowing from an adjacent property that's at a higher elevation than the road itself, and it's just running down the hill and sheeting across the road. At some point in time, it appears that there was a stormwater ditch located on that side of Oakbrook Drive. And it had just filled in over time, and so this is, after meeting with an engineer, we went out and reviewed it, and the recommendation was to install a 500-foot stormwater ditch along that side of the road that would capture that water coming from, from the adjacent property, and it would travel down its normal path that had previously been designed to, for it to flow. The cost for that, to reconstruct that ditch, is $11,500. And that is basically digging out the ditch itself, and then lining it, seeding and strawing it. And so it's nothing that's above and beyond. We're not adding riprap to that ditch per se. But it will, it will capture that stormwater and keep it on that side of the road and get it into the system that, like it was originally designed.
Are they digging out the existing one that's in there? That's what their plan is?
Yeah.
That's why it's not, like, we're reconstructing a lot, just redigging what was already there?
That's correct.
That was it?
It was really, one was really short, the others had a little length to it.
Real quick.
So as you, I don't know if it'll have the video or the sound with it, so the person that took the video and provided it to us, this actually happened after the rain had already ended. So this was flow that, stormwater was flowing after the event itself. So during the event, it's at a higher volume, from my understanding.
This is after a rainstorm. It's not raining anymore, but you can see how the water just keeps coming across because the ditch is no longer in place on the other side of the road to take the water away, so it just drains down on us.
Yeah, we, I've seen enough. I don't know if anyone else has.
And so that's one portion of this project. The other portion that I made mention in the last meeting was, there's a stormwater inlet just north of this photo that the walls were caving in and needed some attention with the additional stone or riprap added to it. We could not fund both, that entire project in the current fiscal year budget. So we, and the plan is to construct the ditch in this year's budget, complete it by before the end of June. And then in our new budget year, come July 1, we would go out and add riprap and fix this inlet. We're gonna combine it with another project we already had in, had planned on Woodland Forest Drive. There's actually an outfall there that needs some attention, and riprap added to it. So we'll be able to save a little bit of money through our contractors by doing both at the same time.
And all of this is done in-house, or are we having this outsourced?
This is being outsourced.
It has, okay.
It's gonna require equipment that we do not have in Public Works.
Okay.
And so that's, that's one of the.
Okay, do we need a motion to get that? Okay, just giving us a heads up on that. Anything else? Any questions from council? Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Deputies report, you're up.
I sent this packet out last week. There's a couple of things that came up over the last couple of days. We've, there's definitely been an increase in fraud. We had two cars stolen this morning. One was in the chimneys of Marvin. I didn't find out where the second one was, but they left a stolen car at one of the houses where they stole the new car, so. It was a, the, they both, I think both the cars that were stolen had key fobs left in them, so I'm getting ready to send out another blast to all of the HOAs again to kind of reiterate some stuff that needs to be taken care of. As far as the speed goes, if you look at the reports from the two radar signs, the majority of them are within compliance, but you have like, I see the majority of the people are, it says here that out of 194,000 cars on Marvin Road, the average speed was 42.24 miles an hour, so there are some that are high, and we'll go through the numbers and see where we can best effectively set up radar. But do you have any questions about any of the stuff that were on the actual deputy report?
Two questions. What's the difference between larceny and burglary? Because we have them both on there.
Larceny is like if I come to your house and you got a bicycle sitting out front, and I take your bicycle.
Isn't that burglary too, sort of?
Not if it's outside, no, it's just a larceny. It's gotta be, it's gotta be over $1,000, or is it $1,500 now? I think it's $1,000 for felony larceny. Burglary is when they come in after the hours of darkness. They break into your house after the hours of darkness. It's a higher felony. If they break in during daylight hours, it's breaking and entering, and it's it's a lesser felony, but it's still a felony.
And I want to say that I actually do look at these reports. Now, my question is, you have two different reports, but they're exact same numbers with cars and vehicles and everything.
They're, they're a little different.
They're not the exact same. They're close, very close.
Yes.
They're very close.
Very close.
From this road to that road?
Right, because the majority of the track that flows through here is gonna flow that way.
Gonna go down that way.
The other two signs.
The speeders stay speeding, is what you're saying.
Pretty much, but the numbers are close on both roads because it's a, I mean, it's a major thoroughfare, I mean.
I just, I'm surprised that they go as fast as they go in, on this road, as they do. You know, I can see that that's more open. This is a lot more, it just seemed, it doesn't seem as open, but I mean, people feel that they're in the.
I can tell you, I went, a drive-through of the new development area, I always forget the name of it.
Broadmore.
Broadmore?
Broadmore.
Yeah, I drove through there today, because I was trying to find the trucks that are dragging the mud out on the road and tell them to quit doing that because we're gonna have a bad accident over there. It was like bat thick on the road today. But I'll go over and talk to their, on Friday, I'll go over and talk to their developer and see if we can do something about that, because it was literally, especially with the speeds they're driving on that road sometimes, it's gonna, it's not gonna be ugly if they hit that mud and go off the road, but.
Or like a motorcycle, especially, dangerous.
The other two signs, I'm working with Davey right now, trying to get those up and running onto our, onto the tablet. But based on what the company has sent me, it's gotta, it's gotta have at least Windows 11 on it, so that tablet won't accept that, so he's working on trying to see if we can upgrade that tablet or do something else to get the other two signs downloaded.
Is there any, any capability of that, those signs being real-time information?
It is real-time. It's, everything's timestamped on those.
I know that, but I'm saying real-time for you, if you happen to be.
No, unfortunately not. But we can go through, we can go through the statistics and look and find out what times they're going through there and what speeds.
All you have to do is get them once, and then they usually, once they get that bad ticket.
You'd be surprised, you'd be surprised at how many times I've stopped.
That's how I learned, I mean.
That's how I learned too. I couldn't afford the insurance.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
All right, next up, we have a planning board report.
We met on April 16th and we basically were wrapping up the Marvin Development Ordinance. Marvin Development Ordinance, Rick Flo from N Focus was there to kind of guide us along. And we basically, with the planning board had recommended adoption of the Marvin Development Ordinance with two changes in Article 8. One was to the amendment to the side corner setback in the SFR 1 zoning. The other was to eliminate the special use permit requirement in open space matrix for the Heritage District. That was it.
Okay. Any questions from council? Hearing none, we'll move on. PRG board report.
PRG report, we did have some conversations, additional conversations regarding the Preserve Trail Connector. We didn't make, they didn't make a recommendation at that point. I think they're still awaiting some of the additional information that council is gathering, staff is gathering and so forth. So that kind of remains on their agenda. We did have a couple of people that were not able to attend that meeting. So it was a relatively short meeting. There are a couple of items that they still intend to talk about in the future. One is some issues around lighting and kind of looking at, you know, what our lighting ordinance is and how that can affect some things and, you know, amongst neighborhoods, things of that nature. But beyond that, that was primarily the discussion around the Preserve Trail Connector.
Thank you, John. Any questions? Hearing none or event, planning report, Tyler.
All right. I won't, so I'll just thank everybody for all their help at Marvin Day a couple of weeks ago. I won't say anymore about that because we have an agenda item. But just really appreciate all the help making that run so smooth. Coming up June 1, we have our 5K. There'll be a health fair, 5K and family fun run at Marvin Elementary School. You can find the registration link on, in our newsletter, on our website, on our Instagram, stuff like that. Currently, just looked, we have 51 signed up runners so far. Still have about two and a half weeks left to register. So if anybody's interested, keep on signing up. Let's get a good turnout. We have so far six local businesses will be set up as vendors. We're still taking some on. So if you have a business locally and anyone's interested, please go to our website and register for that. July 12, we'll have our stargazing event out at the park. You'll see some registration for that. Start coming across our website in June. It's getting closer. August 6 will be National Night Out this year. More details on that to come. And then September 21, we will have a cornhole tournament at Marvin Eford Park. And you'll see more details on that as the summer comes to an end.
Can you send us a link for the sign up for the 5K?
Definitely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Are we having the blood mobile there again?
Yep, the blood mobile will be out there. We've actually today posted the link. You'll see it on all of our socials to where you can go ahead and make an appointment for that day. Instead of waiting, you can have a pre-approved appointment out there to donate blood. And you're getting, I believe if I read the flyer right, for a donation of blood, you get a T-shirt, you get a $20 gift card and you get something. Well, that's enough anyway, but I think you get, yeah, T-shirt. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So a lot of benefits.
I wore that shirt last year, I mean, just a few weeks ago in Costco and someone actually thanked me as a first responder. So it is like a first responder, using, giving blood. So I encourage everyone to do it. So that's great that they're back. Terrific.
Hey, Joe, there was one other thing with the PRG that I just reminded myself of, which was.
I can go back.
There was a discussion in regards to what council, some direction from council. And when it comes to our tree ordinances and things, I know we've been involved in the past in recommending different, you know, types of flowers, fauna, things like that. And there was a question that came up, you know, as discussions around tree ordinance and so forth, whether they would want to, you know, whether council would be interested in having the board kind of recommend certain types of trees, things of that nature for tree mitigation purposes and things like that within our tree ordinance, so.
And that would like come to us?
That was just the topic of conversation and something that, you know, they wanted to kind of bounce off council, you know, for, for direction in the future.
Right, so in, from a mitigation standpoint, if a developer's in there cutting down trees, I mean, I'm not an expert on trees, but I would hope we would.
Well, a lot of that falls to planning board too, you know, because they kind of control some of those parts of those ordinances, working with developers and things like that. Some of it would just be, you know, discussions around native trees versus other types of trees, things of that nature.
Okay. It's good to know. Thank you. Next up, coffee with council. I think Andy, you had that, did you not?
No. No, it was Wayne.
Oh, I'm sorry, coffee.
Wayne, I'll leave it to you. Okay. We'll tag team on this.
All right. Sorry. We had two people showed up, two ladies, a Ms. Walsh and a Ms. Deason from Counterfield Creek and Oak Brook. We talked to them extensively about the roundabout, the stuff they didn't know about. We came in here and showed them the model we had because neither one of them had heard about the restaurant or any of the buildings that are going over here next to us. Hunter happened to be here, so we stayed a while and Hunter was still showing them things from when I walked out the door. But Ms. Walsh said she had some things she wanted to say about the trails and she wanted to email all the councilmen. I have not seen that come across, so hopefully it will come across. She said she had some ideas on that.
Okay. Bob, you have anything to add to that? All right, thank you, Bob. We got two. That's two more than a lot of times what we did.
Very nice ladies that really wanted to know.
And coming with solutions that saying, hey, I'm going to send something to you to consider, which is great. Okay. Thank you. Wuma report. Andy, now it's your turn.
That would, yes, it'd be my turn since you were out of town. Anyway, so this round, we met in Stallings. And basically, everybody's doing the same thing as we are. They've got their town events and stuff and of course, they're going through their budget sessions. They're having same issues, rising costs, all that with, with their budgets as well as ours. So they're having to make some tough decisions as we are. Basically, on all of the old business, we've, there wasn't really any, any new information on any of it. So it was a pretty short meeting. We just kind of ran through it. We did discuss the upcoming meeting calendar. And so the mayor of Waxahaw actually happened to attend and.
Did show up.
We are putting Waxahaw in the rotation now for.
Perfect.
So they hope to have their new town hall finished by the time that they are up next. So now the big news is however, next month's meeting, which will be Thursday, May 23 at 7:00 PM at the Wesley Chapel Town Hall. And it is encouraged that the public from all over the county show up, whoever is interested in the CRTPO program. We, as a council, had this CRTPO 101 course here at Village Hall.
Charlotte Regional Transportation.
Organization.
Organization.
CRTPO. Weddington had theirs just before we had ours. Wuma unanimously feels like it's a great opportunity for us to, to have those same people come and speak at one of our meetings. And we're going to do it in an evening setting so that the public can attend. It's very, very good information as how our road systems are funded throughout the state. What CRTPO can do for us for roads, for sidewalks, trails and other things that CRTPO and exactly what CRTPO funds. So it's, it's encouraged that anybody that's interested, please show up. Wesley Chapel is just a stone's throw away, so a short drive. So that's, that's the, the big thing on, on Wuma's radar at this point.
Two quick questions. Great that Waxahaw is showing up now. They're getting, starting to understand things and stuff, which is great. Where are they at with all the towns on the resolution of signing the de-annexation, a resolution against the annexation? Have all the towns basically said that they were on board with that or?
They're, they're all on board. I'm not sure who has sent resolutions. It was just kind of skimmed over.
Okay.
But.
So they, they didn't really discuss where anyone is. I know we did it.
We did it, but I, and I'm not sure which other municipalities actually did and to what extent. I know that there was some discussion about it, but there wasn't much this last meeting, so.
I happened to meet someone from Somerville, I want to say it was, and Summerfield, yeah, they're pretty upset about what's going on there. And then there was a talk about having some of our state legislators come to a meeting similar to this. They're not going to be at this meeting, CRTPO. Have we scheduled that yet?
No, we haven't, we haven't got that scheduled yet. The CRTPO one is, that's the entire agenda.
Okay.
For this month's meeting.
Normally that meeting goes from 4:00 to 5:30, so this will be at 7:00 PM on 5/23. And if you really get a better understanding, you probably know more about it than any of us being on CRTPO board. I'm on it as well, but I serve as an alternate. So Jamie's the one that goes up to uptown for that. Any updates on that?
No, it's just, I'm glad that Wuma's doing it because CRTPO really helps. I mean, their, their, their job as an organization is to find funding from the state of North Carolina. And, and so we have representatives that go, that come from the state and are there. And their job is to find funding for these municipalities and work on, work with them to get projects done and to help them through the, through the, you know, getting grants and getting all this stuff. And, you know, for, for the many years I've been there, I still learn something new every day. And it, it, it will help, especially this end of, this end of the county, outside of Mecklenburg, that to, for people to really understand what they do and how they go about doing it. And I know Hunter and I have, you know, we did the meeting, but they are a valuable resource.
All right, any questions for? No, Andy, I'm sorry. I'm just looking at the schedule. No questions. Okay, we're moving on. Sorry, Andy. All right, next up, we have a consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
All is in favor. Opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Next up, we have a public hearing, public hearing for adoption of the Marvin Development Ordinance. I just want to go over a couple, a little bit of housekeeping rules. Obviously, we've asked you to sign up, so if you've been signed up, we'll have your name called and come up, speak your name, your address. Basically, we're going to give you three minutes after you do your presentation, Hunter. Three minutes each and we'll have staff members give testimony. So just kind of if you're here to say for or against this, we're welcome to hear your comments. And we'll just leave it at that right now. 30 minute max. We have, yeah, max on the minutes, but I think we should be okay based on how many people have signed up for public speaking, yes. So with that, I'm going to open up the hearing for the Marvin Development Ordinance and Hunter, you're up first.
Okay, so this public hearing is for the adoption of the Marvin Development Ordinance. This ordinance has been drafted over the last year. We contracted with N Focus back in April 23. Began this process. Articles have been being presented to the planning board over the last 12 months. And then planning board at their last meeting did make a final recommendation. And that is what is in front of you tonight for consideration. Per their recommendation, there are five additional changes, which are basically they're just to the zoning map. If, if this is adopted tonight, we are adopting a whole new zoning map to be consistent with the zoning districts and all the regulations within the new MDO. Those five changes are properties basically that were identified as SFR 1 that we're going to zone rural residential. And they are 9206 Joe Carr Road, 9110 Joe Carr Road, 9523 Marvin School Road and 9709 Marvin School Road. And there's one additional property that is going from RR to SFR 1, which is 1225 Crane Road, which is the property we annexed in last year. And part of that is that they have submitted a minor subdivision for one additional lot, which was always her, her plan. Submitted that prior, after the planning board recommendation. So just for consistency, that's why it's being recommended to be zoned SFR 1. And then finally, the, the other big thing that's kind of all included in this is the updates to the Marvin Heritage District Small Area Plan. These amendments basically with the adoption of the MDO will be repealing basically Chapter 150 and 151 of our code of ordinances. 151 also does include the Marvin Heritage District Form Based Code. Most of that language that was regulatory in nature got incorporated into the MDO. The other kind of guidance language that was in the Form Based Code is basically all being just put into the small area plan. So there's no new language being added into the small area plan. It's basically taking language that we, that's already been adopted through the Form Based Code that is more regulatory in a plan, not in an ordinance. Any questions on this? From the council?
No.
With that being said, Rick, do you want to? Let Rick kind of come up and just maybe speak and add on anything else, but, and then we can open it up for public comment.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have anything in particular to add except to reinforce the fact that we want to make sure that we've got everything in order. And your planning board has worked diligently over the past year to, to accomplish those tasks. And I know you have one council member in particular that has attended a majority of those, if not all of those meetings. And I know others may have attended and viewed online and attended from time to time in person. So, and we spent quite a bit of time making sure that we were, we're covering all of our bases. That's the, the approach that we take is to make sure that we're, we're helping you build the best defenses for protecting the integrity of your community and, and structuring things so that that legislative decision, which is the decision that comes to the council, is really your, your strongest tool and eliminates that subjectivity. And once that decision is made, then the standards and specifications of the ordinance would then kick in and, and be applied. And that's the reason to have a much more robust, clear and defensible set of standards is so that you are, you are eliminating that subjectivity beyond the legislative decision. The legislative decision, your decision, is that one that can be very subjective because it may be the timing is right or it's not right. It's consistent with your plans or it's not consistent with your plans. You make that call. And so I always recommend that, that you consider every matter before you on the subject of the, the MDO in the positive context. So if there's a proposal that you, that the motion be to consider that proposal, that way a yes vote means yes and a no vote means no, and it eliminates that ambiguity. And that's all important. I know your counselor here can attest to this, given the fact that penalties section of the general statutes are now not in your favor. So anytime that you are found to be out of bounds or having not followed your due processes, that all of the cost of that petitioner that brings that case are all assessed to the taxpayer, to the town. And that's why it makes it very important to, to have clear and concise and very comprehensive set of standards. So it's very clear what bucket something falls into. And I know there have been a lot of discussions about do we leave some of these things out of the bucket? My contention would be not to, because then it leaves it up to what I'll call rounding. You know, and speculation as to whether something's included or shouldn't be included. And again, to refer to your counselor, I'm sure that the last thing that anybody would want would be for the courts to hand you the decision that they've made in your place. So that's why we've tried to build a very comprehensive ordinance so it becomes very clear. Yes means a yes and a no means a no. And it's, it's quite that simple. So with that said, that's the, that's the best summary I can offer. It has been a great pleasure and I'll be here throughout the duration of your hearing tonight, should you need any assistance. Thank you.
Okay, before we, council gets to speaking on any of this, we'd like to hear from the public. So again, just a quick reminder, state your name and address. So again, just a quick reminder, state your name and address. We'll call you up and Kim will be timing you. I know it could be contentious. You might be upset about it, but please keep your calm and your demeanor while we're presenting this. I don't have any, any ability to vote on this, but I, I can ask you to leave if it gets a little bit unruly. So ask your participation with that. So that being said, who do we have first?
We have one resident signed up to speak, Bill Loughlin, 1802 Summit View Place.
Good evening. He said my name and address. I'm not going to repeat it. I'm here simply to do something really easy, I think. So you've got your MDO ordinance. I read in the packet, you've got like a handful of other map changes, little tiny changes. And I'm just asking for one tiny map change for my, for my property. The MDM map has it rezoned or reclassified, I guess, as SFR3. And I think it would be more appropriate to be SFR1. And I've got a copy of the email I sent to Hunter with my measurements and whatnot. I got my survey. Got the side setbacks and all that. And then picked out a similar property that is on randomly, just on Pelham Road, cul-de-sac lot, shaped like mine. That is also SFR, SFR1. So I'm just asking for that consideration for that one minor change to be added to that shortlist. And that's it.
Thank you. Next up.
I don't have anyone else signed up.
No one else has signed up to speak? Okay. What's that? Okay. So we are going to, then I'm going to close the public hearing for the public to speak and I'm going to add, I'm sorry. That's what I thought there was.
They, they may have signed up on the wrong sheet. So you might want to go back through those.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to go through the list again. If you signed up on this, on the initial list, so let me know if you want to speak during the public hearing. Ron Hamel. Dennis Crawford. Jay Johnson. Marilyn Gill. Scott Etheridge. Marshall Gore. And John Sensenbrenner. Okay. Come on up, John.
I grew up on Wingard Road, just south of the Autobell Car Wash. It was named after my grandfather, Ralph Wingard, who developed his little farm back in the 1930s. So for the last 67 years, I've been in the Marvin area. The two things that, you know, come to mind with what you're doing tonight is 20 years ago, Waxaw made a similar decision to take a, what would have been a rural area and allow multifamily homes to be developed on it in a tighter distribution than what their original ordinance was set up as. So they were at the time not thinking that there would be Marvin Ridge School System, a Cuthbertson School System, all the development at the Cuthbertson Providence Road. At that point in time, one of the corners there that is now the Lowe's was a goat farm. So the decision to whether or not Jones Homes should be allowed to go from what is obviously rural, since all of the properties that are around it are listed as rural, to go to a more dense population, sets you up for what Waxaw is facing now. They have a dairy farm that has been owned by the Howie family for more than 80 years. I'm not so sure they were not one of the original grants from the King of England. But it was dairy up until a few years ago, when the two brothers, Jim and Lester Howie, could no longer manage dairy. Although you have seen the cows on that farm because they're just south of the post office and they're still standing out there. That is still listed as farm and county property. But that property goes from Providence Road all the way through to Marvin Waxaw Road. And right now there are going to be over 700 residents put on that. Waxaw has already painted themselves into a corner. You've been down there enough over the last few years, realized there is no place to park. And it's very difficult to get through town at almost any time of day. And it was because of decisions their town council made 20 years ago that has allowed the density of homes to occur within their town limits. And they cannot expand. Both North and South Main Street have historical buildings on them that cannot be moved. The railroad is not going anywhere. So they are boxed in and until somebody builds a belt road around Waxaw, they are done. Our properties here are in a very similar fashion. You've got a church on one side of the street and cemetery on the other. Odds are pretty good. It's going to be tough to get that to move. So the decisions you make tonight on that type of a decision has ramifications for years from now. So think about what you're doing and whether or not you're going to take a rural area and put more homes on it than have been approved for any other area in this town.
Anyone else that signed up?
No, I went through everyone on the list.
Okay.
If you want, you can ask the public. There's anyone.
Okay. So there's no one else wants to speak, I assume? That's not in the public. Okay. So we're going to close the public hearing and then just have it up for discussion within council?
So council, I would like to kind of clarify on the, just for a few things for the public. One being that, and you guys are aware of this, but with the new MDO, we're reclassifying basically for zoning districts that are consistent or with the regulations. All property that's pretty much undeveloped is being, that's over two and a half acres is pretty much being zoned RR to have that protection. So any new development coming in would have to go through the rezoning process. This is not grant, basically this is not granting anybody additional. It's not giving any properties more uses or rights than they already have in the current ordinance today. The property with the Jones Home Development was already rezoned last year through the Heritage District Conditional Zoning. That's staying their original approval. The second thing on that is if council wants to amend the zoning map as one of the residents requested, you have the authority to, just needs to be part of the motion. I have spoke with the resident. It's still recommended that they are zoned SFR3, just because his neighborhood is zoned SFR3 for consistency. But it, it is up to council if they would like to go ahead and make that change on the map tonight.
And if you wanted to make that change, you would just add that description of that property with the other five.
And, and what's the consequence to that? Does it change anything around it?
It wouldn't change anything around it. It just, I mean.
Is it consistent with the area that's, the homes that are there currently?
No. So what, the reason why Weddington Chase is being zoned SFR3 is because of when that development was approved through Union County prior to it being annexed into the village, was their minimum setback or their minimum lot size were 15,000 square feet, I think, 40 on the front, 40 on the rear, and then five on the side. There are some existing conditions out there that those properties, I mean, even though the average lot size in Weddington Chase is roughly about six tenths of an acre, the smallest lot size is about three tenths of an acre. So the reason why Weddington Chase was fully selected to be SFR3 is because we knew that that was the most consistent with what was plotted and what their zoning is today. So it doesn't create any nonconformities with setbacks, lot size, all that stuff. The, the residence property specifically would be, I mean, I, I looked at it briefly, but he does meet the minimum lot requirements. His structure does meet the minimum setback requirement. So it wouldn't create a nonconformity on that end. But it would, the rest of the properties in Weddington Chase would still be all SFR3.
So there would be one property that's zoned.
SFR1.
SFR1.
Correct. That's if you get.
And the rest will be SFR3.
Correct. That is if you guys would like to make that change. It is not staff's recommendation to do that. I mean, because he can also come back for rezoning or like I said, you guys can consider that at this time.
What, what would be that process if a resident, you know, we're, we're trying to make the best decision. And I don't know if we want to get up into breaking up individual residences in a already established neighborhood to different types of zoning. Cause I think that can create some issues, you know? But, so there's nothing to stop that, a resident like that though, for coming back after the fact to request a rezoning for, for a particular reason. But there's nothing that would be more restrictive if he was an SFR1 versus an SFR3, because it's already an established residence?
Correct. The only thing it would be taking away for his property specifically is due to like how the current ordinance reads with the RUC, the, that Weddington Chase's currently RUC basically, which is a vested district, so whatever the plot is, it does become an administrative kind of issue where the MDO is creating inconsistency for that. With that being said, where their current side setbacks are five feet, where his structure is, yes, 21 feet off. It basically is going to, he wouldn't be allowed to, or any future property owner that purchases that property wouldn't be able to add on, wouldn't be able to do any addition or any of that, just because he is basically lowering his setbacks. But that's really the only kind of consequence outside, and then just looking weird on the zoning map.
So would that be a disadvantage then?
In my opinion, yes. In my opinion, yes, it would be.
It would be a disadvantage to go from SFR1 to be SFR1.
And that's.
That would be a disadvantage.
Yes. But like I said, if the property owner requested, that is, that is his choice. That is why the rec.
Yeah, I think the property owner could not develop, they couldn't do the addition because of the setbacks if they're more intense.
If it was SFR3 or SFR1.
One.
If it's one.
One. So three is better if they wanted to do an addition or a pool or whatever.
Yes, three is.
Three is better.
And yes, because in that, it's better because it's consistent with what they have been already going off of for the last, you know, 10, 15 years since they've been in the village.
So, so in the past, people in some of those situations that were in nonconforming lots, they would have to come for a special use permit perhaps for a pool or an addition or something like that, because they weren't necessarily in compliance. Or, or that's what we're trying to get to. So people don't have to come back to us for special use permits all the time, that, that the things that you would typically do and, and a municipality would be allowed, would be by right.
Correct. So yes, the MDO in general, when we were looking at the zoning map specifically, to then zone the properties to be consistent with the districts, that's in Article 8. The goal was to look at the existing conditions of those already plotted subdivisions, what those setbacks were, either if they were in Marvin and developed under Marvin standards or annexed in. And the goal is to where, put them in a district that's most consistent with what is on the ground there. Based off of their plotted, plotted lot sizes, their setbacks, where structures sit. It's hard to go line by line or looking at property by property, because all those houses, for example, in Weddington Chase, there's a few that sit six to seven feet off, and there's a few that sit 20 feet or more. And same thing in the varying lot sizes. So that's why we classified all of Weddington Chase as SFR3, because it's consistent with what's already their original plotted development. And so it doesn't take anything away from them and it, you're not really gaining anything either. But then zoning them SFR2 or 1, like the whole neighborhood specifically, would be taking that away and creating additional nonconformities.
And, and I would say with the newness of, of this ordinance kind of coming in, as long as they still have that right, you know, if we didn't do it tonight, they'd still have that right to, to
Good.
ask for a rezoning further, as they might kind of figure out more things about it.
Is that a, is that a very hard process to do?
It's the normal rezoning process. There is an application. There is a fee and there's stuff that has, but that, that, that is putting it on the applicant. Anything that we would do. I mean, yes, the village can initiate a rezoning, kind of like what we're doing, I mean, with this adoption. But for the most part, all rezonings that ever came across you guys, outside of annexations, have always been applicant driven.
Why would somebody want to be in SFR1 versus SFR3?
I don't have an answer for that.
Okay. Can I ask, can I ask the person who's requesting it? Cause I'd really like to know. Is that okay?
Yeah, I think.
Bill, come on down. We're just trying to understand, why do you want to be SFR1 versus SFR3?
My question is why not? You know, I'm, you know, y'all have gotten a lot of emails from me and questions and things, and I appreciate some of the responses I've gotten. But I am generally have a few issues with the way the MDO has come down. I think it's come too quickly. And I, I don't appreciate our neighborhood being taken to the lowest common denominator. So my property is SFR1, my all measurements and physical attributes. And I think it should stay that way. And I'm, I just asked, you know, I tried to handle this with Hunter and he, he told me to come in here today, tonight. So, so here I am, simple request. It's a one line on your amendment to your shortlist.
Bill, it's no skin off my nose what you want for your, your property. As far as I'm concerned, it's yours. And if you want to, if you want to restrict yourself from being able to do something in the future and then have to be rezoned, then that's, that's your choice.
If I'm not mistaken, you cannot add on to the side of your house. So you have to go behind your house.
The covenant takes care of any desire you may have to expand.
You just go out the back.
So, I mean, I, if you want it, SFR1, I don't care if you, but you know, know this, that if you do decide to do something that doesn't fit that zoning, you'll have to come back and apply for rezoning and
I'll be just the way I am now.
Go through that process. So.
Nothing will change, nothing will change for me.
Okay.
So.
Yep.
I do want to know how it's configured in the neighborhood. Generally you want zoning to be consistent. You want FSR3 to be beside SFR3.
Yeah. No, I get it. It's, okay.
I'm also concerned about the precedent it'll set for the parcels that are adjacent to Weddington Chase. You know, we've had apartments trying to come in. There's unincorporated chunks that could annex in and then build 11,000 square foot lots. Cause that's what SFR3 is, I think, is down there in that tiny, tiny little lots, which comps comparable values, all that, all that good stuff will affect our neighborhood values.
Or you want me to state or anything by coming and saying, this is what I am, this is what I like for it to be?
I'd like to stay this way I am.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. All right. Hunter, can you address the adjacent areas and how that would be affected?
So specifically his property is pretty much in the middle of Weddington Chase. So it would, okay. The surrounding properties already in Marvin are being zoned what their relative zoning district is. Any properties that are annexed into Marvin that are undeveloped, we zone that to what the closest fit of its current zoning, meaning that most likely it would be zoned RR if it's undeveloped and it's a larger tract of land. So they're not, all because it's beside SFR3 or beside an existing development that's SFR3 does not mean that property is going to be zoned SFR3. At the initial annexation request, we would zone it RR. And then that, if there's a, you know, contract or something for, you know, developer that's trying to develop that property, he would have to go through the rezoning process. It'd be the same process if they did it through the county or they did it through us. It's just, we're not going to zone that property something, especially if it's not, if it's undeveloped. It's going to be the closest zone to what it is now, which would be RR.
So it would not automatically be SFR3?
Correct.
Okay.
If Chaplain, if you could just expand a, a little bit upon what, what you were saying about wanting to keep the unanimity within neighborhoods and what the advantages to that are.
Yeah, generally you want your zoning scheme to be consistent. You want similar zoning besides similar zoning. You can have something called spot zoning. That'd be unusual here, but if you have, it's usually when you rezone a, a property that's more intense and different than everything else. So you, you just, you generally like to have uniform regulations with similarly situated properties adjacent to each other. And it just seems strange to have in the middle of the neighborhood, one property with different zoning than the other numerous parcels.
And that's not the spot zoning, right?
The spot zoning is not illegal per se. You're just supposed to, to be able to justify it and I like consistency. If, if you've got 40 other parcels in a neighborhood, all those in one, it seems like they should all be that way.
Are there any legal issues because the only thing that, the only thing that, that what he's looking at, he could, he could come back next week.
No, it's.
He could come back next week and do the same thing. He could say, I want this rezoned to, to what he wants now. And there's, and there's nothing prohibiting him prohibiting.
No, but it may get, planning commission in this board would look and they may look and see all the properties surrounding it, zone differently and deny it. But the risk of a spot zoning or other issues, it's, the, the risk is usually when the, the property is more intense and the neighbors are, are agitated because they don't want something different beside them. Here you've got a property owner requesting really to be downzoned. So, so the risk is not as high. It does make your, your zoning in that area, just you'll have, I don't know how large the neighborhood is.
260.
Okay, you, you have 300 homes all zoned. SR, R three, and then you're going to have one lot with a different zoning. It, it seems strange and I don't know that it, i- i- if that parcel, if that should be rezoned, and I think that's the point he's trying to make, maybe the rest of the neighborhood should be FSR one. But that's.
Any problem though, I mean, his request, there's nothing legal about it or detrimental to him. I mean, he's hurting himself, not his neighbors, correct?
It's probably true. Yeah. Cause he, he's limiting his use of property.
During a normal rezoning process, would that normally have to be something that would allow for public input that?
Yes, and it'd be more specific.
And we'd kind of be circumventing that if we did it this way.
You would have more scrutiny on one particular parcel, including neighbors, because some of the neighbors might not like it. Cause they might not want, want that to start a trend.
And we just learned about this when?
The resident emailed me last night on the request. We have exchanged emails, you know, trying to explain why Weddington Chase is being proposed as SFR three. Like I said, yes, some properties out in Weddington Chase can be zoned SFR one, some could be SFR two, some could be SFR three. But there's no way that I could have went, we could have went property by property. And to Chaplain's point, it then looks weird. It's not consistent. And so the whole neighborhood was being proposed as SFR three to be consistent as well as consistent with what is already, once again, what their regulations have been, you know, up until the state. And I believe, like I said, I believe Austin's added that if council wants to add that additional change in tonight, but if not, you know, we can just have that removed and.
But we're making this, we're making a decision on that with, with, without the regard of the other 299 homes.
If you guys would like me to add that change in there, I can. If not, I, I won't. I'll tell it to you.
I, I mean, I'm not inclined to do it at this point. If they want to bring it back and have another public hearing to rezone it, then we can do that. But I'm not inclined to not be consistent in the middle of a neighborhood.
Would you guys, since you're aware of the request, would you guys be inclined to at least waive the, the fee?
Sure. I would.
Absolutely. But I, I'd just like to follow the, the process because again, if, if, if we made a determination for, for yes or no on this, we're not considering the other. And again, I'm not, I'm just using my own numbers. We're not considering the other 299. So I would, I would be completely, I would personally be completely up for if that's something that he wants to do, that the, the fee itself would be in, in this particular instance, that the fee to, to, to go through that process would be waived.
And, and that's completely fine. Cause the other thing that I do want to mention, he emailed me last night, sent me a survey. I looked at it briefly. But I would want to, you know, make sure that he's aware and especially counsel that I want to make sure it's not creating any non-conformities and that opportunity of coming back, even if it's next month, would allow staff to properly review and make sure and make sure he's aware of any other issues that, if he wants to go through with the request, just make sure that all that information is there.
I, I would like to be clear though, that this is a, you know, because this was from a timing issue, that this is a, from the, from the fee standpoint.
Yeah.
That this is, you know, that, well, and I would turn, I would turn to you to go, this is a one time.
Or, or.
This one particular.
Or would we want that? Could you say, for instance, that downzoning, which is something that, you know, we wouldn't think a lot of people would want to do, but that downzoning, zonings don't have a fee because that's probably something that we could incent.
Well, it would, it would still cost resources in terms of public.
Right, yeah. You've got it published in the newspaper too, because they've, the lobbyists in the newspaper have kept that cost in.
And I was just wondering if. Also just want to be clear that, that we are protecting all of his neighbors in the process of doing that.
Yeah.
And as, as I would do to protect him for someone else in the neighborhood wanting to do the same thing. So, but I'm, I'm up for that, that, if that meets. And, and just to be clear, Hunter, the, the parcels that you had listed here that were changing, how is that different or is how much work that you had on that have you spent?
So that process, so there were one property that's being changed from SFR one to RR. Basically had a pre-app, had an application in place for a subdivision. Yeah, he's rescinded that. So it's recommended then to move that to RR. The other three properties going from SFR one to RR were ones that we kind of missed, like not really missed. It would just kind of got jumbled into additional. For example, there are the two properties on Joe Carr are right beside Wyndham Hall. But they are larger than two and a half acres and it's more consistent with them RR. And then the other property on Marvin School Road was another one that over the last year, year and a half, I filled it a bunch of calls on because it's been up for sale. But, you know, I don't think it's under contract. And now that at this point, if somebody does go under contract, I would be referencing the new MDO and saying that the zoning is RR. And like I said, then that fifth property is one that is going from RR to SFR one because they've submitted a minor subdivision application, which has always been her intent. Even when she rezoned or annexed into the village. And so that's why, just to be consistent with her subdivision plan and all that stuff, go ahead and have it in zone SFR one.
And, and those are all individually, individual properties, not part of a subdivision or anything like that?
Correct.
Hunter, how, how much, and you can just rough guess, how much in the village of Marvin today without annexing anything, how much undeveloped property do we have?
I would say there's about five parcels that are larger than maybe 10 acres left. That maybe has one house or some type of structure on it. Other than that, there is a good handful of properties that are between maybe three and seven acres. But all those are being zoned RR and but that's about it. That's not, but that's already in our municipal limits. Outside of also the Heritage District, of course, but those are all, once again, being zoned RR outside of the churches and Village Hall, it's on Civic. Which they were going to have for any Heritage District development, they would have to go through the rezoning process anyway.
Any other questions? So do we, would we vote on that separately? Because this is on here.
You have two draft motions in your system. The first is for to consider the adoption of the ordinance with those five parcel changes. And there's a second clause in there regarding the smaller visions to the Heritage District Small Area Plan. And then you have a second motion on the draft statement of consistency and reasonableness.
Okay.
We're just saying, one want to speak to what, what it was.
Okay.
All right.
Can, can, can Rick, while, while you're, while you're perusing?
Thank you for giving me the chance to stand up. Planners can't sit and talk at the same time. You know that, right?
Gotcha. Well, we certainly appreciate your work on this. Can, can you give us, again, I just want to highlight, this is not something Marvin has done in and of itself. I mean, there are, you've worked with many municipalities to go through the same. Can you explain some of that and, 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 and why they're doing that?
Well, the, the, when the statutes changed a few years ago, it really changed the environment. If you read that statute.
State statute.
The state statute, that is correct. It's a, a new chapter that was created in 2019, session law, 2019, one 11 specifically created the, the new chapter 160D as in David, which took all of the planning legislation affecting municipalities and the planning legislation affecting counties. And it consolidated those two into one place. The next thing that it did was it reorganized because those planning chapters, those older planning chapters had been around about 60 years at the time and had been amended somewhat awkwardly over the years. Put a little patchet here, patchet there type of thing. The last component that was substantial was the fact that there was about also 60 years of case law. That was, that was influencing those, those, those older chapters of the statute. And so a small committee of the Bar Association of North Carolina worked diligently to, to update, reorganize, incorporate the case law, influence Kate's law, all into a fresh new chapter. About a year later, in session law 2020, 25, there was, there was some tweaking done to it. Both of those statutes were set to go into effect in 2021. So it was to give municipalities a chance to really get their, their stuff updated. And, and Marvin did do some work to update their, the basic compliance of the older ordinances that you have. However, in the, I like to use this saying, the, the, the whole is greater than the sum of the parts. If you read 160D, not everything is obvious until you really look at the big picture. And that's where the emphasis on the legislative decision comes from, to move it away from the administrative decision. Under your old ordinance, the planning board was making administrative decisions. Just like Hunter might do, they were voting to approve a plat. Now keep in mind that once the zoning district is established and so much of the jurisdiction was in this single R designation, which meant by right, they had a lot of rights to go to certain densities already. And, and, and so the emphasis was on the site plan and trying to regulate at the site plan level. And you can't be subjective in that administrative arena. If it meets the standards, then you pretty much need to approve it. Okay. You could might, maybe look at some specific issues like a dangerous curve or something like that. But generally speaking, it was not something you could just reject. And so by place, by shifting the emphasis to the zoning map and setting the zoning map up around existing conditions, which is what we've done now with the MDO. The zoning map largely reflects those lot sizes, those land uses and things of that nature that are on the ground today, then what that does is it puts a rezoning in the path of change. Whether that's a new subdivision coming in to acquire one of those 10 acre sites or whatever the case might be. It puts a, a rezoning in the path, which is a legislative decision because that zoning map is essentially a page of the ordinance. So it's a, when you, when you do a rezoning, you're actually legislatively updating or changing or modifying the law of the land in Marvin. So with that said, municipalities around the state are realizing that especially in this litigious environment that we have, because one component of that original bill in session law 2019, one 11 was to place the financial burden on municipalities automatically as opposed to parties appealing for cost in, in a litigation. Now it's automatically assessed to the municipality and what that's doing is that's brought out some more frequency of, of, of challenges. I, I have a lot of jurisdictions I've worked with over the, over the last 40 years, well, 38 years in North Carolina. And so I get updates all the time from local managers and planners that are saying, oh, look at this. You told us, you warned us about this and our neighboring city just got in trouble over it. So they sort of shine the light on each other a little bit and it makes me proud that they listened. And because that's the key, you as a governing board for this, for this village, want to be able to make informed decisions about change and growth. And the best way to do that is through your legislative power because you do not have to justify staying the same. You do not have to justify a no vote. In fact, in a rezoning or zoning map amendment, as they're technically known, you do have to justify change. You do that with the statement of consistency and the statement of reasonableness. So you, you justify change, but to stay like you are, a simple no vote, it's over. That's it. And that's the best way to protect yourselves, the taxpayers of this jurisdiction. And I would hope that your counselor would also see the, the value in, in keeping things very clean.
So it takes the subjectivity out of it?
It takes the subjectivity. Well, it leaves the subjectivity in the legislative arena.
Right.
Where you have that subjectivity. It takes it out of the administrative determinations or made administrative decisions, i.e. approving site plans or plaits or things of that nature.
So you've worked with many municipalities over the last, let's just say, five years doing the same thing?
Yeah, I've written more unified development ordinances in the last five years than I had in the previous 15 probably just because of the pressure to really reinvent themselves. And I've worked with some jurisdictions like yourselves that are very, very concerned about preserving and protecting. I've also worked with jurisdictions that are very eager to change. It's when you don't care that you don't need this. But you know, if you want to preserve or you want to protect or you want to orchestrate change, that's when you need good planning and you need good policies. And so, and, and, and most jurisdictions want some balance of the two. They want to preserve and protect certain attributes and aspects, and they want to open the door to certain things that they may desire for their community.
And, and just to be clear, in, in terms of what we can approve or new types of development, this doesn't give us any more rights than we had before.
That's right. It just cleans it up. It makes it very compartmentalized and very neat and packaged.
Ricky, have you, have you been working with other municipalities and us going through this process? And this has been a long process. This has not been something that we've done over a couple of weeks or a couple of months. This has been something that we've done for quite a long time. But, but everything that we've done throughout this process, do you find that what we've done, this council has done, our planning board has done, has been consistent with other municipalities throughout the state?
Yes, I would say that you've gone even beyond what many, many municipalities have done in being particular about things. I see some towns that are, that are a little less particular. You are very particular here and I admire that. You, you have a, you have a sense of value in your community and a sense of pride in your community, and it shows in the decisions that you're making. We spent a lot of long evenings in here over the past year.
I know.
And, you know, working through this. And so I commend your, your planning board in particular for having endured all of those lengthy meetings and lengthy discussions. I'm known for, for not having short answers because I want to give clarity to the answers and responses. And we spent quite a, quite a period of time kind of shifting the, the, the wind, if you will, from the way we had been doing business to a better, safer, more prudent way of doing business here. That will give you at, at, at least as good or better outcome than what you would have received under your previous ordinance. Cause you've got more clarity in your standards now too.
We certainly appreciate your time.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to serve you.
Thanks for clarifying.
I, I do have another question because, and this, I don't think it was, has been addressed yet, but last week we had kind of a open house to go around this and we were all in different shifts. And if you weren't here, you could go into different rooms if you wanted to learn about something, but I'm sure your room was probably the most, the busiest right in here. Did we learn anything from that or, and I'm putting this out to the council too, because you had your assigned stations of where you had to be. Is there anything that was an aha moment or, you know, was, I, I guess I'll just throw it out to that. What did we learn from that?
Well, frankly, for me personally, there were absolutely no surprises because, you know, but what, what I want to say to you is thank you for creating that opportunity for the drop in. Because for folks that were uncertain about something or there, there, there was some fear in their mind about the changes and things of that nature. It gave us an excellent opportunity to really work one-on-one with those folks and, and try to respond to their fears and their questions and explain to them how those, those issues are addressed and how it protects the town as a whole. So there's two ways you have to look at things. So there's two ways you have to look at things. One is those individual properties, that individual property owner or resident or what have you. And then there's the collective, there's the community as a whole. And you really have to weigh and balance both of those out because a lot of times people will come in really thinking about themselves, or they'll come in thinking about the community. But we want to make sure that people have both perspectives in their understanding. And so I think that we were able to work with a, a large number of people and help them with that information and help them understand or get information, get, get more clarity to their questions and things of that nature. From my perspective, and, and I have a term for it, it's not a derogatory term, but I call it all, towns in North Carolina are uniquely identical. They have their unique character, they have their unique functions, they have their new unique perspectives, but there's a lot of similarities in the way people respond emotionally to things that leadership is doing. And so we, you know, I've seen so much of that throughout my career that it, it's not a surprise. And, and so I want to commend your citizens who brought those questions forward, who went out of their way to get answers, who came up here and participated in this. As far as any, anything that really opened our eyes, it wasn't anything, there wasn't anything out of the ordinary, there were not any great surprises or anything like that.
I think a lot of the information that was out there too, that was being spread was not through here. So having that for the community, I think was a bonus. For you, Hunter, Paul, me, or that sticker thing I thought was a unique way of sort of doing our own little survey, what are, where are the biggest issues at with this? And what did you find there? Was it with the, the, the actual zoning or what?
And those stickers weren't necessarily for the issues, it was where they had the majority of the questions.
The questions, right. But that's where the issues.
Yeah, I think a majority of, you know, the residents that came and participated last week were, had questions on the permitted uses, how it all pertains to how it's going to be adopted and how it's going to be, you know, utilized, the MDO, as well as, you know, the zoning districts. And that's kind of the biggest thing is like, and then, and Rick kind of hit on is that the reason why this MDO has a lot of different uses listed in a lot of different districts, even though on the initial zoning map, not all those districts are being utilized, is mainly because we are setting ourselves up to, when anything comes across and it's going through a rezoning process, there's an avenue for it. And you guys can take that consideration to, you know, not approve or, or, or approve it. But it really kind of opens up an avenue, which it's a clear process where you're not having somebody come in and you're, you're like, you know, have to do a text amendment that's maybe not as cleaner, and then it impacts maybe more because they're focused on one certain property and not, not how it might impact a total zoning district as a whole. So that was probably the biggest thing. I know a lot of my conversations I had with residents were in regards to, to the zoning map, why their properties are maybe being zoned one thing over another, mainly from, you know, SFR one to two or three, as well as some of the permitted uses and why we identify or why some permitted uses are permitted in cer- certain districts or why we're even considering them at all. And so, so I think that was a great learning experience from them. I felt like I had some really good conversations with residents on that. And ultimately that they, they left that open house with a better understanding of why we're doing it, what, what's the implementation of it and, and how it's going to, you know, benefit us in the long run.
To add on to Jamie's point, I mean, this didn't happen overnight. I know we spent a lot of time just going through all those uses and having to check off which ones were, what would make sense here and what would make sense in different districts, which we, we have very few to, to send them to if that's the case, so, which is positive. All right, any other questions from council?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Marvin Development Ordinance, the MDO, recommended by the Marvin Planning Board on April 16th, 2024, with the following specific directives. One, the following revisions to the official zoning map, parcel number 06-201-002, which is 9206 Joe Carr Road, updated from SFR one to rural residential RR. Parcel number 06-201-001, which is 9110 Joe Carr Road, updated from SFR one to rural residential RR. Parcel number 06-204-007C, which is 95223 Marvin School Road, updated from SFR one to rural residential RR. Parcel number 06-204-004, 9709 Marvin School Road, updated from SFR one to rural residential RR. Parcel number 06-180-005M, which is 1225 Crane Road, updated from rural residential to SFR one. And two, the guidance language from the current Marvin Heritage District Form-Based Code, not incorporated into the Marvin Development Ordinance, shall be added into the Marvin Heritage District Small Area Plan, which is part of the adopted Village of Marvin 2020 Land Use Plan, the PLAN, for the purpose of informative consistency, decisions between the PLAN and the MDO in accordance with NG, NCGS 160D-604A and NCGS 160D-605A.
Further discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
I'd like to also make a motion to adopt the draft statement of consistency and reasonableness for the adoption of the Marvin Development Ordinance.
Further discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Next up, who do we have? Okay, we're going to move into, give me a second here, get my unfinished business, unfinished business. And we've moved discussion of reassessing sending meeting minutes to HOA president's list.
All right, you guys asked me to put this on your agenda a couple of months ago. Couple of months ago, we started sending our meeting minutes once adopted, just sending a simple link to the HOA president's list, asking them to distribute to their residents. Since that time, I've had very little engagement.
I don't think you need to send it anymore. I'm not getting it personally.
I will give credit.
From two different HOAs, I'm not getting it.
I will give credit to two HOAs that I know have been, that was Oakbrook Estates and Belgrove. I have had some communications with them, but I have had no other interactions with any other HOAs.
So Austin, how hard, I mean, do you have a, like, when you send it out, do you just, you have a, a standard email list that you, that you send it to?
I have, yeah, I have an email list. I just copy and paste the language. It's, it just links people to the agenda and minutes page.
Okay. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say, this is like coffee with council. Very people, very few people show up. But that doesn't mean we can't be responsible enough to, to do, take that action. And if it's a simple email that goes out, I can't, as Kim always says, we can take a horse to water and we can stick his head in the water. We can't make him drink. But they could never come back to us, the community, nor the HOA, nor the constituents can come back to us and say, we never knew what was going on. And that's another, it's another avenue for us to be able to say, when, listen, if I were an HOA president today, one is I would send a board member, one of my board members to each one of these council meetings. And if that doesn't happen, the least I could do was take the minutes, go through the minutes and pick out the highlights of the minutes. And I could pass that on to my, to my constituents in my HOA, my residents. So again, all, everything that we do is about communication. Communication is not one-way communication. It's two-way. That's how we get things done. So my recommendation would be yes, to send it to every HOA president that still are not inclined to send a board member to council to understand what's going on in the Village of Marvin, I'd like to say.
Well, and like he said, he's gotten response from two neighborhoods that are actually getting a benefit. So I would hate for those neighborhoods to not continue to get that benefit if they're, if they're actually getting a benefit from it. So I say, let's keep on with the communication. I mean, if, if two neighborhoods are getting, getting it, good.
And, and they could be two of our largest, we don't know. But at least we're getting it out to them. They're, you know, again, our responsibility is to get it out.
Dead horse beat, done.
We absolutely can be doing it, that's fine.
Austin, there's one community I know of, Amber Meadows, that does not have a current HOA president. And I will try to get a name for you to send that information to.
And I, and that's fine, I appreciate that. HOA boards turn over so often, it's hard to keep up with who is the current president. So if you guys ever know that a board's turned over and you know who's the current president, just let me know and I can update my internal list as well.
I'll try to get you a name and, and email address.
I gotta give you one too, so I'm not.
Sounds good.
Any other questions or comments from council? I think we're all on the same page with that. Give them as much as we can. I, I still, I want to be able to say to them, well, the information's out there, whether you decide to talk.
Whether the HOA presidents get it or not.
I know, it's just another way to get it out there. We still can't, we still can't reach everyone. This is one way to at least say confidently that we're, we're trying.
And, and I think as long as we're doing it and, you know, we're getting more and more community involvement, that's something that we want. It's incumbent on, you know, people in the public, if they're not getting it from their HOA presidents and, and, or their HOA organizations and they want to, it's an opportunity for them to, to ask internally, you know?
It's interesting when a neighborhood has an issue though, they come to us and it's definitely two-way, so, I mean, it's.
One of the things that surprised me in the last coffee was that neither person that came there knew about the restaurants, they didn't know what was going on or anything else. And they came here, asked the one question and got a whole lot more answers.
That's great. That's why we're doing it.
One, one thing I'll note really fast, if you guys would like, we can start putting that in our newsletters as well, just a list of the most recently adopted minutes. Be very easy to do if that's something you would like.
Yeah, even just a link to them, you know, the, the.
You'll see that in this Friday's newsletter.
Okay. All right, moving on, discussing, next up, discuss and consider waiving the two quote requirement and consider entering contract with Dewberry for proposed trail sys, wait, I'm sorry. For proposed trail systems in an amount not to exceed $41,000 and allow manager to execute contract.
So if you recall, this was an item that we put in our CIP plan. This was the Civil Engineering Environmental Services to conduct due diligence on the Greenways and Trails Master Plan. The first item of business that they would come in to do is conduct a regulated waters, wetlands delineation on the Village Hall Park project to determine what activities we need to do over there. The quote itemizes the letter of summaries that they would give to us based on their findings. From there, they would also look at the endangered species, and then they would conduct the feasibility study on all the other trail networks that are part of the greenways overlay. Scope of work number two discusses the feasibility, which they will basically look at the proposed trail network and then determine the geographical summary of the floodplains, wetlands, streams and soil types, and the permitting recommendations and considerations in the trail network in the Greenway Master Plan. So this is really just a good overlay of us to see where there's identified issues with floodplain, floodways, endangered species. We still will have to come back and do wetland delineations or additional engineering reports on those identified trails, but at least this gives us a good summary of where those problem trails will potentially be so we can plan for more time and more money on those specific trails. Kind of a preliminary on all trails and network, all trails and greenways across the village in the Greenway Master Plan, and then a more in-depth endangered species wetland delineation of the Village Hall project. This was in the CIP plan that was approved, and it is something that we put in the budget for this upcoming year. So we will probably start on a portion of this because it is halfway in the Part F proposal and then halfway into the fiscal year for next year.
So the, part of this is in the Part F, correct?
It, it is, but we will be spending, we, it's not, we will not be spending Part F dollars on this. The engineering studies for the, the Part F project came in over budget for engineering, so we're using this small portion of the Greenways Trail Network to do the wetlands delineation of this.
And it is in the budget?
It, it is in the budget currently, yes.
Any other questions? We don't need a motion, do we do need a motion?
I make a motion to waive the two quote requirement and to enter contract with Dewberry for due diligence and feasibility study for proposed trail systems in the amount not to exceed $41,000 and allow manager to execute contract.
Further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you for that. Next up, we have Marvin Day 2024 debrief.
So again, just thank you to council and all the staff for all the help that day. Thanks to our great sponsors, she really wouldn't have been possible without them. So basically a little rundown of the day, began at four with our kids' zone. We had bounce houses, face paint, tattoos, balloon animals, a magic show, several things like that. Inside the barn, we had some people such as Marsh, our urban forestry, we had Carolina Rehabilitation Center, Reptiles 101. So we had a really good array of things. There was a lot of people there in the early sector of the day, it seemed like, from four to 6:30. Definitely not scared to say, there was probably 300 people between those two hours. And everyone that showed up that day definitely had a good time because it was, you could see the smile on everybody's faces. Then the band started at 6:15. The crowd didn't really die off any from the kids' zone and from the barn side of the park. It just didn't translate to the band side as much, it seemed like, but we still had a good crowd for the band there towards the end. I'd say there was no less, I mean, at least 100 people were there watching the band towards the end of the night for the fireworks and everything. Got some good feedback from all of our sponsors and vendors that were there. The three food trucks were all positive. We had Junior Scoobes who did the ice cream, coffee truck and everything. Everybody that showed up was pleased. So I think it was a great day, I think it was a success. Think the, some things can always be tweaked, the layout was good, I thought. But all in all, it was a good day. So I wonder if anybody had any feedback.
What do you think would bring more people in for the band or the end of the night? What's, what's, I mean, it comes down to parking and you leave when you want to leave and, you know, when you have to get on a bus, that, that's going to create some.
I, I had a question though too. When we say the number of 250 at the peak time, I seem to notice that, you know, even some people were just there an hour or two hours. So there were people going back and forth on the buses.
Oh yeah, I'll just.
So 250 is just the estimate of what the peak was.
That's, yeah, 250 at one time.
Do we have an estimate of, you know, maybe it was 500 or 600 people overall because they were kind of rotating through like?
Oh yeah, I mean, I think it was over 500 people throughout the time, definitely. I wouldn't be terrified to say 750 throughout, I mean, through the whole event. I mean, it got up there, a lot of people came through the area through that short time. But I think it's peak and it's, the rage of it was from four to before seven.
And a lot of it was younger kids.
The younger kids.
And they're not going to last six hours, you know.
So the food trucks had minimums, how did they, most of them do beyond the, the minimum?
No minimums. They were all just there out of kindness. They said it was fair. No one complained. I think everyone had a good time because all three of the food trucks honestly enjoyed listening to the band that was there because the music was great. And like you say, I mean, and the fireworks show at the end, I mean, that fireworks show rivals any show you're going to see anywhere. That was a crazy show this year, so.
Did you get a, you know, this is hard, like, get a feel for how many were like from outside the area, from outside Marvin that came to this? Obviously people knew about it, so I don't know what our scope, if it was just by our emails or, you know, blast that we had out there, which we did an excellent job with. But you think it were mainly Marvin residents or just, it's hard to tell.
I, I think you asked at one point.
I think it seemed as though, yeah, a lot of people that got, pretty much everybody, I think that got off the shuttle was probably a non-resident because on a lot of my advertisements that I put on websites and such, I hardly mentioned anything about parking at the park. I basically alluded to the fact that you would have to get on a shuttle. So pretty much it seemed like only like our residents who are on our Instagram and newsletter and stuff knew about some parking at the park. So I like to imagine everyone that parked there mostly was resident and everyone getting off the shuttle, I like to imagine, unless there was already. So I like to imagine everyone that parked there mostly was resident and everyone getting off the shuttle, I like to imagine unless there was already overflow, was non-resident. Or at least a little further away.
My neighbors took the shuttle.
Yeah, so. But.
All right, well, we're working on planning next year. So if you guys have feedback, send it our way, but we're gonna.
We'll start meetings again in June.
Yep.
Is it gonna stay in around this timeframe then? End of April is what we're shooting for?
It'll have to flip around because Easter will be end of April next year, I think.
We'll look at the calendar. We haven't.
But April seemed like a good month. The weather seemed good. Wasn't blistering hot or anything. We got lucky with the, with the rain. I think the clouds hurt us a bit. I think some dark clouds rolled in there right at 6:30 and it, they were spooky looking, but we got lucky with no real rain.
See if you can get them to make the mistake on the bus again next year, too.
Yeah, charter bus. Honestly, that charter bus paid out.
All right, good job Tyler.
Thank you Tyler.
Thank y'all for the help.
Lot of fun. Thank you.
All right. Are we moving into, since we don't have any new business, right? Open topics? Nothing from anyone? Moving along, review of action items? Wait, do we want to, since we tabled, we may have an action item.
If we do.
It'll be fine. We've, we'll be adding minutes to the newsletter for Friday and going forward. I'll be sending you guys that registrant list for the annexation group. I'll send out some follow emails on that annexation proposal. This is from the budget work session, but Jill's gonna do a capital project ordinance for the roundabout funds from the taxes. We're gonna execute the agreement with Dewberry for the trail feasibility study. We'll continue to send minutes to HOAs. Gonna move forward with applying for the Safe Streets for All grant. That was on your consent agenda. And that is about it.
Tyler's gonna send out a link for the 5K to us.
Tyler's gonna do that. And that's, that's all.
Christina, you have anything?
We don't have a meeting next month, do we?
Yes, we do. We have two.
The fourth. I'm looking for it.
It's the 10th.
Oh, it's not showing up on my calendar normally. It does. Okay. Oh, it's Monday. That's what it is. Okay. No, I just was confirming something for next, next week. It's not on the normal second Tuesday of every month. It's a Monday, which is the 10th. Okay. Next up, review of the mayor, Crow Kim's list. What you got, Kim?
Andy, have you called about the school signs?
No.
710. Okay. Where are we with ADA parking at the park?
We had to conduct that stormwater study first, which is the AMT. It's probably gonna be fall.
Okay, can you just put that one on hold then?
On hold?
Yeah. How's the bamboo removal going? Great, 50%. They're making progress. Fantastic. Christina, did you talk to Centralina about the floodplain technical assistance? Execute the contract?
We're, we're in process right now.
So it's not done yet? Okay. Tyler, did you have the vendor update the community video? Okay. Annexation consultant idea. You can just put that on hold for now until we can find out more information. Okay, that's it.
I did have one question. I saw a resident who was involved in redoing the survey. Does anyone know where we're at with that? Are we, are we gonna bring it back?
We have a, we have a meeting scheduled in a couple of weeks and we will bring you more information when we have it.
Okay, sounds good. All right.
I think we should do council comments after we get back out of closed session.
We can do that.
Have some move comments, okay.
Okay, so.
I'll make a motion to move into, to recess in a closed session pursuant to NCGS 143318.11A3 to consult with an attorney retained by the public body to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Further, further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I don't know, do we need our tablets? No, okay.
So meet in that room or this room?
Hunter said that room's really, really messy, so let's go back, back here.
So, connector is still recording?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, not ready yet. Oh, you're ready? Yeah.
All right. Just moving back into the regular council meeting. The next up on the agenda is unfinished business. First up is discuss and consider return of the Marvin Creek Connector Trail easement.
So, that would be me. There are documentation records in your agenda packet. You guys have seen this a couple of, for a couple of months. You all had a request from Malon on, I'm sorry, March 24th. When Marvin Creek entered the agreement with the village and the easement, the assumption was the trail would be built in the calendar year 2024. Many conversations have occurred, not only on the design, which we're appreciative of, but now the need for additional studies. Understand the village may want to rethink the timing of the terms, the terms of the timing and the various studies that are needed past the end of the calendar year. The board would need to have the easement back, the easement provided back. It is not to say that we are not supportive of the trail, but we need to reconsider if it moves into 2025 or beyond. You all at that point had asked me when this was initially presented of why the issue, issues on the timing. I in turn sent an email to him on April 10th. And his response on April 11th was provided that the path and the easement of has been a significant conversation, looking to satisfy a number of desires on Painted Turtle and Grove's Edge. We've co-designed the solution to date and pulled the trigger on the easement, easement grant last fall based on the facts at hand and the assumption the trail would move quickly. While we appreciate the desire to work around the original design and the reality is that delays are creating issues within our community. Hence, a redesign or continued evaluation of options is not of mutual interest, which is driving the timeline for completion. In speaking to the board, the design alternative is not something we'd be supportive of and would like to have the easement given back to them. This is essentially what he said. There's some letters in your agenda packets from some residents. And aside from that, I mean, y'all have seen this several, several times. I don't have anything else to add. I will say that, I'm sorry, item number two. Yes, item number two on your agenda for the engineering surveys for the wetland delineation, the FEMA studies, I'm sorry, the floodplain studies from various agencies and approximately forty-four, I'm sorry, thirty-three thousand with a contingency of 12,000 actually is related to this specific project as well, so.
Well, I, I think that staff is still kind of figuring out what our options are here. I don't know that we've gotten to the point that we kind of know of the different options that have been discussed where we're at yet. So, you know, my, my thoughts would be to kind of let, allow some of those discussions to continue to play out so that when we do make a decision, we're, we're making it on the best available data. As far as the investing in the $33,000 and so forth at this point, I, I still think that's premature. So, I would probably kind of permanently table that until we get more information to make a broader decision on regarding this connector.
Yeah, I agree with John. I think we just need to, Hunter's doing some more research. So, we're going to let that play out and then we'll just put on hold the study until we figure out what we're doing there. So, we don't need to see that on another agenda.
And do, do y'all want to close the door on number procedure?
Well, yeah, do y'all want to, I mean, there could be just a motion not to return the easement at this time, unless you want it to come back up, go ahead and take action and then pick a motion to.
We want to do it in the affirmative.
Well, here's the thing.
It keeps them coming.
But, but they're still, they're still legal, there's still legal stuff going on.
Correct.
Well, I, I'm not doing anything until there's a legal resolution, there are options on the table. It would be, to me, it'd be irresponsible to make a decision with legal still in play, options still in play.
And I think we can point to in the past where we had an issue in another easement in another area, community, and we stopped. We didn't go any further on building a trail, but we didn't give the easement back either. So, I think setting precedent, we do that right now, then we're going to get a call from that, that group saying, why didn't, you gave theirs back, why didn't you give ours back? So, I, I look at it as setting precedent. I don't think it's finished legally. You know, I don't vote, but I, I would be on the side if we split vote on this, that, that we keep the, just for the record, that we keep the easement.
And, and I would just table, I would just table this until we have some further legal direction and direction from whatever Hunter's looking into. You guys go with that?
Do you need a motion for that?
No.
Sir, just so I'm clear from a staff level, you want to table the return of the connector easement until we have other legal qualifications?
That piece has got to come to a resolution for, for me. Because I'm not making a decision on something when there's no resolution.
Okay.
That would be absurd because who knows what, who knows what triggers are pulled in a legal dispute? And, and we're put in a bad, we're put in a bad position or vice versa. So, I.
So, do you want us to, is that, is that the consensus?
I would say, I would just say completely table it to, I mean, there's no staff, there's no direction.
Can we do a quick straw pull to table indefinitely or do we need to take a vote?
Well, Hunter, Hunter has, he has pieces that he, we're still looking at options, different options. That should be fair to, for both, for all parties. And from a legal standpoint, that's, that's got to, that's got to.
Yep. Are you good with that?
So, the only action would be.
Unless you wanted to make a determination regarding the return or not to return in the foreseeable future unless facts change. I didn't know if y'all wanted that to.
No.
Okay, just.
Yeah, that's fine. We just, I just need to know it, when Hunter brings, if, if Hunter has finished his research, do y'all want us to then in turn bring?
Yes, bring it to us.
You can bring it to us, but again, then the next, our next, my next question will be, has it been resolved legally?
Well, and that's, that's the whole point. Do, I mean, if we're going to bring it back and then have the question, I mean, if we're going to add this agenda item back again and to only have that same tabling happen.
Well, then, whenever he's got his information, we need to find out where we are legally.
Okay.
And bring it back at the same time. And if the answer is we're still in limbo, then we may just be in limbo.
We understand now.
Good.
Until there's more definitive that we don't need to bring something back.
Yep, got it.
Okay.
Yep. So, now we're on to three, which.
Yeah, because two, we don't need to discuss.
And three is.
Next up is discussion of reinstituting paid parking passes and instituting parking usage fees for non-Marvin residents at Marvin E. For Park.
Which isn't, it's a non-issue, so.
So, we're not doing that.
Not feasible.
Does that need a motion in any way?
Nope. All right, that's it. Council comments. Wayne?
First of all, I'd like to correct something, so next door neighbor to talk about the new library, Southwest Library on Coppersom, that it was a wax saw.
Turn your, turn your mic off. And lean into it.
Lean into it.
I want to talk about the library, Southwest Library on Coppersom's property, the school. It was put in West, uh, next door neighbor that it was a wax saw music, uh, library. It is a public library for this section of the county. And the reason it's on Coppersom is because they had the extra space and the county commissioners gave them the space. And I want to thank the officers here. I want to thank Tommy, wherever he is, he's home asleep right now, and the staff and everyone else.
All right. Jamie?
I had a chance to meet David Willis, Representative David Willis had a, a reception last night and I had a chance to go over there and speak with him. He thinks that there's great opportunity for us to procure some funds, from some funding for many different things, for, you know, for the loop projects for, and even with the wax saw property. And I know, uh, I talked to him about bringing you into the loop on that and, and let's keeping that kind of our foot on the gas with that. But also got to meet with Jason Sane, Representative Jason Sane. He is, he's again, he's the representative that's over the appropriations. So, I got to spend time with him. I just wanted to make sure that he knew where he was at, which was Marvin. And we would certainly appreciate any consideration that he puts toward any kind of funding and, and grants and anything that the state can do to, you know, to come back to the village of Marvin. He was very appreciative and, and it was great meeting with him. Next thing is, I, I can't help myself but to say Marvin, the, the people of Marvin stand behind our fallen law enforcement. I, I'm a huge military and law enforcement advocate. And to lose our fallen law enforcement in the community this, over this past week or two is, is a tragedy. And certainly thoughts and prayers should be with their family. Take a moment to, to put a thought, put a prayer and realize that every day that those people put on their uniform, they're here to protect us. And it's a job that I always say 99% of us don't want to do and won't do. But they do it every day with, without regard for, for themselves and they do it for their community. So, thoughts and prayers to them. And Tommy, good luck in retirement. I shouldn't say good luck, enjoy retirement. You, you certainly deserved it. You, you, you've met the challenges and you've, and you've, and you've gone out there to protect us and now it's time for you to go and enjoy yourself. So, thank you so much. And to all law enforcement that's out there, be safe. We, we do, there's a large part of us that do appreciate what you do.
John?
Just especially wanted to say a thank you, both staff, but all of the high school kids, family members, everybody that helped to make Marvin Day the success that it was this year. I, I think it was better kind of focused with timing. I, I think there's probably things folks will continue to tweak. But it, it says a lot for as much volunteerism that we have just even going into it that, that, you know, is part of what makes the Marvin community what it is. And my hope is that, you know, as we continue to build, you know, from year to year, that the people that have had good experiences share that word of mouth and, and things like that. But, you know, thank you to council for supporting it. Thank you for the volunteers that helped make it happen. And thank you to the residents that came and, and just shared some community with us.
Well, as usual, thank you to our staff and of course, our law enforcement that protects us. Ed, thanks for being out there, doing your job. And, you know, and special thanks to Tommy Gallus. He's made it through, made it to retirement and is going to enjoy the rest of his time in retirement. And we thank him for, for his years and years of service, so that's it.
Everybody said what I was going to say, so I have really no comment other than that. Thanks for saying that. No, I'm not going to, no, just go ahead, Kim.
Okay. So, ditto to what everybody else said. And, oh, I just ran out of my head.
I can't help you. I don't know what's up there.
Oh, Hunter, congratulations. Have a great wedding weekend. That was it. Yay, that was it. And then what everybody else said.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate as well. I, I don't think there was an opportunity since we lost those officers to, to be in front and the sorrow and the sadness that continues to spread throughout communities. And it, it all goes back to supporting our officers all the way through the process and, and putting those that belong behind bars, behind bars. Congrats to Public Works, I think, for proclaiming this. It's, it's good that we, that we recognize them. And I think we had an individual, I won't name his name, but he was here last week saying, why do we need people like that? And if you could only just take a few minutes and realize how much work is involved in keeping trails up, keeping roads up. I mean, the fact is, you know, I called Davey just on the weekend, Friday, and he was on it. But, you know, a developer just pulling out mud on the roads and stuff like that. But he was on it and kind of keeps our community safe and, and what we, what we want it to be. So, it's, 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 it's worth having that proclamation for that. Marvin Day was great. Jamie, I appreciate you taking the MC opportunities and letting me just kind of sit and sit back and enjoy the whole day. It was great. The trial run on the UDO, I think, was really, really helpful and insightful. And I think, you know, we talk about what we might do as far as how we get our message out. But I think if there's opportunities going forward that we capitalize on that because I'm, I'm done with like the next doors and everything that goes on there. I don't even want to listen to it. That's not our venue. But we have things like that and we correct the record. I had an individual that was just against everything and I, I didn't even want to talk to him then. I said, just go in, spend as much time as you want with that. And if they didn't get the message or what we're trying to do, and I think it was nicely by the, the guest we had here, I forget his name, Rick. You know, he, he, he put it together very nicely for us. But I think it's something we should look for, look to do if there's opportunities to do that in kind of trial runs so we know what we're doing. And by all means, congrats on the upcoming wedding and enjoy your time and enjoy your new chapter in your life for sure. We will have one more opportunity, but the kids will be out of school. But they are going to be graduating. I have a graduating senior this year. So, but the 12th is graduation, which is Wednesday, I believe, is they have the ceremony. Looking forward to my parents being here. I think they come in on Tuesday, the day we have a meeting, so.
No, we have our meeting on Monday.
Monday, even better. They come in on Monday, that's what it is. So, it'll be short because I'll, you know, want to spend time with my family. I just, maybe I'll have you run it.
I mean, it's nine o'clock, nine oh six, I'd have, I'd have here two hours ago.
Yeah, I'm sure you would have, so. But we are, we are all good. I think the last thing is just need a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Holes in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, thank you.
Well, let me run the meeting, dude, get out of here. The record shows that I'm passed this.
Yeah, but I'm more thorough.
And guys, just to let you know, our live screen died on us mid-meeting.
Your what?
The live screen died on us mid-meeting. We think it's a YouTube issue, we're putting in a ticket with the AD company.
Okay.
Get our money back?
Get our money back from YouTube?
Have fun.
Thank you, enjoy.
When are you done, tomorrow, today?
Not your last day, it's just, yeah, well, last day is a free man. Well, you're not, we weren't a free man.
We will not call you, when are you coming back?
After the day, yeah, I'll come in tomorrow.
Whoa, 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 whoa. You're going to Key West? Been before? Have you been before?
I'm out, Monday morning, five, I'm in the car. We're just sitting like, sorry. Number one, all the way to.
Key West.
With Almarada.
Yeah.
Mile mark eighty-two, which is close to a war.
Do yourself a favor and do a sunset dinner?
She's got me on a gram right now.
That's got to be.
Is that the worst part about being in a attorney, federal law services?
What, what else do you do other than government?
Do you do like, just house a lawyer, do some things?
Hopefully it'll help.